So there's a motion made by, for the treasurer's report by Councilman Jumping Eagle to have a second. Second by Councilman Steele. Secretary, call for the vote? Yes, go ahead. Come to the podium, please. Push the button there.
It's on, isn't it? My name's David Tally Plim, I'm resident of the Wounded Knee District. Just to point a clarification, last month, out to Ellen, I asked Cora what the biweekly payroll was. And I don't know that we got an accurate number, but since that time, I've been able to confirm that the first pay period of the month, it's 1.9 million for the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. The second pay period, it's 1.6 million for the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Secretary, call for the vote?
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Don Ray Gossberg?
What's this for, Stacy?
This is for, to approve the treasurer's report.
Not more.
James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.?
No.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Sr.?
Yeah.
Anna Halverson?
No.
David Poyer? Bold Little White Man? Arfil Steele? Blaine Littlethunder?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman? Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Sr.?
Yes.
Lio Weston?
No.
David Kelly?
No.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Lee Frandl?
Yes.
Troy Little?
No.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Well, yes, six, no, two not voting, motion carried.
Uh, question?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I think that, um, just looking at the report, I, and I will maybe can address that Finance Committee, but just had some questions on the, um, our Native American bank account. I think with that, uh, we did see some deposits go in last, I think the last week, but it's not showing on the Native American Bank. So we just had questions on some of the things that are not showing up on there. So those are the things we wanted to ask the treasurer, but maybe we can do that at Finance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on to the next agenda item, we have the comptroller here. Okay, at this time, I'll turn the mic over to the comptroller, Mr. Dean Patton.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I guess they forgive me the opportunity, first time in history, for a comptroller's report to tribal council. In the ordinance itself, ordinance 2506, it wasn't really clear what report I was to provide. So putting this report together, you should have it in front of you. Oh, they didn't pass it out yet? Oh, you did, okay. So, so what I wanted to focus on, on this report, was the current matters that the tribe is, I guess, working on. Um, so what I included here was the audits, the indirect cost agreements, and the BIA letter that was dated, um, April 18th, that we had a meeting on, last week it was. So if you would like, I could read the letter, and we can have questions once I get done reading it, um, by a section, I guess. So the first section, uh, this comptroller report to the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council contains information related to the important matters the comptroller's office is currently addressing. Audits, that the departments within the financial account office are engaged with the pre-audit firm to complete the 2021 audit, and expect it to be submitted to the federal clearinghouse by May 30th, 2025, pending there are no unforeseen issues. We had a, the treasurer night last week, right now, as of that day, we are not seeing any unforeseen circumstances right now. Also, we are reconciling the accounting records and compiling financial documents for the 22 audit. We are hopeful to have the 22 audit completed prior to the anticipated deadline date of December 20, 31st, 2025. That date is set based on, we had a, again, a few months ago, we had a meeting with the auditors and a pre-audit. Once, they're all, they're all hands in with the Ogallala Sioux Tribe right now to get our 2021 audit come in at the anticipated date. From that point forward, their staff, they can't commit their staff to the tribe because it's their busy time of the year also. So that's why we went out and said December 31st for our 2022 audit. Once that 2022 audit is completed, submitted to the clearinghouse, the tribe will no longer be three audit delinquent. Um, that's where in a situation we're at right now. So our 2025 audit is due to be submitted by September 2026. 2024 audit is September 25th. So that's how the audit submission process is. With the completion and submission of the 22 audit to the federal clearinghouse, the tribe will no longer have delinquent audits. However, the tribe must continue to work on completing the 2023 and 2024 audits, as the 2025 audit is due to the federal clearinghouse by September 30th, 2026. For tribal council, you know, um, we are right now in all blown out audit mode. That's all of our stuff that we're doing upstairs. Plus, we're in a process, I'm gonna get to that. So when I say we're right into audit, this year is our 2021 audit. They send me samples testing that I have to pull all the documents for. They're really focused on the CARES Act funding this year, in this 2021 audit. So the information I sent them so far, 80% is CARES Act funding, that they want to test, all the support documents. We did have all the documents, we did provide everything to them, which was great. We didn't leave one document out this time. If you recall the previous audit, we couldn't find 11 documents, and it showed up in our audit. So when I was getting these, uh, things from the auditors to sample, I did go to the records office, I said, "You find everything, no matter what." Yeah, if you have to kick doors open, you find them. So, thank God we did. So that's the bulk of it, is the sampling, that's where we're at now. Previous two, we got to the sampling, it was account reconciliations, uh, bank checks, everything. Definitely want to thank my staff upstairs for the hard work they did in getting that prepared in a timely manner. So that's, we're almost ready, like I said, completely. No unforeseen circumstances, we should have our 2021 done by, or submitted to the clearinghouse by May 30th. So, any questions on audits while I move on to the indirect? Because the indirect cost is also a issue. All right, we are, I guess, addressing this. So indirect cost agreements. The tribe is four years delinquent with our indirect cost agreements. Their tribe has an indirect cost provisional rate for 2019 and 2020. The 2019 final provision rate proposal was submitted in December of 2024. The 2025 provisional rate is being prepared by indirect cost firm and myself. They provided me a lot of information over the last couple of days. Um, and expected it to be submitted within two weeks to the Interior Business Center. That's where our proposals have to be submitted. Once submitted, the tribe is put on a priority listing for the negotiation of the final provisional rates. The tribe is waiting for the Interior Business Center to respond for our 2019 final provisional we submitted. We submitted that in December of last year. We have not heard back from the Interior Business Center to negotiate that final rate. Keep in mind, tribal council, we get these submitted, we're gonna be put on, it's a priority listing, and that's just the way it goes, at the Interior Business Center. Um, so I can't even throw an expected month out, I'm shooting for August, before they give us a call back and negotiate that final rate. So that's where that's at. But to prevent issues listed in the audits and indirect cost agreements, um, a pre-audit firm was selected June 2022. However, the pre-audit firm contract was not approved until May of 2023, with the actual financial reconciliation beginning in June 2023 for the 2021 audit. This one-year delay is having a direct impact with the audit indirect cost agreements, and the withholding of direct contract support funds and indirect costs by the Department of Interior. We have a meeting with, uh, the BIA officials tomorrow morning, which is great. They're gonna, we're gonna visit on a provisional indirect cost rate they're gonna allow us until our agreement gets approved, which is great for the tribe right now. If this didn't happen, we would have had to look at our indirect cost budget again and possibly lay people off or see who's essential, non-central. So that was great, we have this meeting scheduled tomorrow morning. Um, and I expect good things out of this, of the meeting tomorrow morning. Basically, because of the meeting we had last Tuesday, was it, President? Yeah. I think the Bureau had an impression that the tribe was sitting over here, not doing anything with our audit and our indirect cost proposals. Once, during the meeting, I mentioned to Andrea Wong, this is what the tribe has been doing, it's just not fast enough. And by me stating those facts, it seemed to me that she was, I guess, happy to hear that. Um, I don't know if she got the impression where we wasn't doing nothing, but, um, so she was, she seemed very pleased once we sat on a meet. I know Mr. Kelly was there also at the meeting. So, um, so tomorrow morning, 9:30, we have a Zoom meeting with them, which I feel will really go a long ways to, with our indirect costs and direct contract support dollars. Um, the biggest thing is the indirect cost dollars that we need. So the budget justification letter included in the indirect cost first working sessions in 2023, 2024, and 2025 indicated that the federal agencies will impose sanctions due to the audit and indirect cost agreements being delinquent. Unfortunately, failure to approve the pre-audit firm in 2022 has put the tribe in a difficult situation. Um, in 2022, if we got to roll there, we won't be sitting here in the situation we are right now, I feel. So, um, so the last part, as I mentioned, is the Bureau of Indian Affairs letter dated April 18th, 2025. I know that was passed out in Finance Thursday, I didn't have a copy with me. So, and I mentioned this earlier, the tribe had met with the BIA officials concerning the contents and attachments related to the delinquent program narrative and SF425 reports. The issue related to the delinquent audits and indirect cost agreements are stated in this report. The tribe and BIA officials have a scheduled meeting to temporarily resolve the indirect costs and the 425 issue. Um, internally, the tribe verbally developed a plan to submit the narrative and SF425 no later than May 31st, 2025. What I also have to do is, I took it upon myself to draft a letter based on that letter from the BIA, put it on the president's letterhead, indicating basically exactly where we're at. Most likely, the contents of my letter will be in that letter. Um, and we have till May 16th, I think it was, somewhere around that day, yeah. So, yes, so, um, so when I was sitting down to prepare this comptroller's report, I was sitting there, what shall I include in here? I know there's a few more issues, but I thought this was the most important issue that needed to be taken care of. It's obvious that it has to. But at the same time, it's not like we're not addressing these, we are addressing these issues, we have been. And I've said this numerous times, it's just not going fast as I want it to, but audits usually don't. So, um, we were very fortunate to find this pre-audit firm backed in. It was really unfortunate to find our audit firm backed in, because all auditors were taken, didn't have staff. So, um, whittily, I mean, I think numerous times, were actually taking on the tribe's, um, audit. Plus, with our pre-audit firm, Baker Chili, um, when they came aboard, they didn't realize how big the tribe was. You got a $30 million organization, it's gonna take a while to get that audit done. Plus, you had a 2000, we had a 2019 audit, that the firm that we worked with, we couldn't get their working papers for them, so that also delayed the pre-audit firm on that. I know we did a letter to the, our previous auditors stating that they dropped the ball, they left the tribe in the middle of the 2020 audit. That was really devastating for the tribe, that's why we had to go scramble and find this firm. But, so, um, just to assure you, we are daily working on this to get it done. So with that, is there any questions I might have that I could answer?
Councilman Dreamer?
Thank you, Chair. Dean, just a quick question, who does the 425s?
The 425 that are done by the accountants upstairs. And I know I stated this in Finance that day. I was, I didn't want the treasurer at the time not knowing our final numbers to have her sign an inaccurate report. But for the, now, based on our meeting, I'm very clear, with the BIA's concurrence of get these done by May 31st, it's gonna be a lot easier for us to do them. Um, I was kind of stuck on the previous stuff that I was, I was trying to do, but yeah, it's from upstairs.
So it's not the director's jobs, it's upstairs, okay?
No, the directors do the narrative reports.
All right, cool. That's all I got, Chair, thank you.
Councilman Poyer?
Just one question, I don't know if Dean should answer, or I don't know if Lisa's still here, but maybe Mr. Gunn knows. Where are we at? Because I know there's council action to go after the previous auditing firm that backed out on us. And I don't know what you can say, because it's on the air, but has something been filed on that?
I don't think so. I think that's been referred to Hobbs Strauss. And I've seen correspondence on it, but I don't think a lawsuit has been filed.
So we'll have to try and find out, because I think that happened two or three years ago, that we took action to do that. Because it's jeopardizing our audit, I mean, put us way behind by not getting those working papers, I guess.
Yes, and it did. Um, also in 2019, it also hurt the tribe when they drugged their feet on and drugged their feet on. And we was doing good with our findings, we was having no findings, and all of a sudden, one finding popped up for our delinquent audits. And I just figured that from day one, that you're the reason why we didn't have this audit on time. You had it done in plenty of time, so, but anyway, that's in the past, we need to move forward.
Councilwoman Littlehawk Weston?
Yeah, thank you, President. Um, my question, Dean, is, I know a part of it is a completion of the 425s, but I just seen Mr. Long sitting here, Chief of Staff. I think, uh, my question is, when will the 425s be complete? When do we have, uh, like a timeline for all the 425s to get done?
We have an anticipated date of May 30th, but I'm, I'm sure it's not gonna go that, go that long.
It'll probably be shorter than that?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe before May 30th? Huh?
May 29th.
Okay, May 29th at midnight?
No, but I'm anticipating they'll be done
Okay.
a few weeks prior to that.
All right, okay, thank you.
Councilman Dillon?
You know, when we talk about things like this, about our audits and stuff, we should do them in executive session. We have enemies out there who expand on everything they hear from us, and they blow it up, and they make it worse than it is. My suggestion is that we do this in executive session, we can ask all the questions we want, but we're not letting the outsiders who use them against us know what our plans are and what we're doing. So my motion will be to go into executive session.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Dillon, second by Councilman Lunderman, any question? Go ahead.
Um, so Sonia said that you had something other than, well, everything you're telling us is basically what you told us in Finance. And she said you told her yesterday that you had an update on something else that you wanted to, can, can we get that update? Because everything you talked about just now was pretty much everything we heard in Finance.
What I mentioned earlier, I don't know if you heard it, when I was talking about the indirect cost proposals agreements, I talked to Sonia, I showed her the paper from our indirect cost firm. Then I was heading over to contracts office to get some documents from them. Earlier, I mentioned that I'm assisting with the IDC, IDC firm, I'm assisting them with getting these documents together. That's what the discussion was, yeah.
Okay, secretary, call for the vote?
Jeremy Rosales?
No.
Uh, Dean, is there anything else to report? I mean, why are we going into executive if your, is your report done? Or do you have more to report?
My, my report's done. Um, I said I'll take questions if you need them at the end of it, but that's my report. Yeah, that's my, my report.
Well, there's the motion maker, so we gotta run the vote. Secretary?
Jeremy Rosales?
No.
Don Ray Gossberg?
No.
James Cross? George Dreamer Jr.?
No.
Julian Spotted Bear?
No.
Richard Greenwell Sr.?
No.
Anna Halverson?
No.
David Poyer? Bold Little White Man?
No.
Arfil Steele? Blaine Littlethunder?
Yeah.
Tyler Lunderman? Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Sr.?
No.
No.
Lio Weston?
No.
David Kelly?
No.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Lee Frandl?
Yes.
Troy Little?
No.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston?
Yeah.
Four yes, sixteen no, motion failed. Councilman Poyer?
Motion to accept the report.
Hang on, we have questions over here, Councilwoman Spotted Bear.
Thank you, President. Dean, before, before I was removed as a chair of Finance, we were working on getting, getting training from the BIA. I know the request had to be sent from the president's office to have the BIA provide the 425 training to your accountants upstairs. Has that been done, and do the accountants have sufficient training? And are they able to properly work with the 425s to make sure that we meet the requirements?
Um, no, the training was, the BIA took that off the table, so that's, they, they disapproved it. But yes, based on that meeting, and they did give us some examples, yes, the accountants have a well aware of how to complete them. Um, what we're gonna start at is the first two quarters of 2025, and we're backwards. As long as you get those 2025 ones in, we should be, we should start accepting them, so. Um, but no, they took, they denied the request.
Thank you.
Um, I wanna have my, my, uh, secretary, our assistant, answer that question, if she may. Stephanie, can you give us a, just a little rundown of what we, what we did on our side to, to help and, and see how we can, uh, resolve some of these issues? So I'm gonna turn it over to Stephanie.
Good afternoon, council. So with Julian's question, it was, I did send over a request for one-time funding for these trainings for 425s and others. Because they had already did technical assistance training prior, the higher ups felt that they gave enough technical assistance with regard to the 425s, so they didn't give us the one-time funding to have this training. Um, we've had, when since Frank came on, I think we've had three, we've requested three or four technical assistance training for financial reporting and other assistance. However, we didn't get a good turnout from our people upstairs. Um, I did tell Dean this at our meeting, and I let him know. Um, and if you need the evidence, I was collecting that evidence to show you all, especially the Finance Committee. We've requested it, we haven't gotten any, um, compliance from our people upstairs to come and do these, um, 425s. The reason why it came to this was because I was getting, uh, emails from the self-determination specialist at BIA that the 425s were very seriously delinquent. And based on that, they were, they were thinking about doing distinction. And that's why, to me, that was concerning, and that's why we set up the meeting. Um, since Julian wasn't here, I didn't know who the next chair was. Otherwise, I would have sent it to the Finance Chair. Um, but we did have Dave Kelly come over, uh, he sits on Finance, so he was able to sit in on the meeting. Um, tomorrow, if, um, I know they're gonna have another one with regard to what they talked about Dean with, um, regarding the, the, um, sanction. Um, I did send you all an email, and it, on there, it showed how many, um, all the letters where they were gonna do sanctions before, prior to when Frank came in, and then a couple when, when we were in, in office. Um, so it was happening more than once. Um, due to a letter or whatever Cora had shared with them, they're taking it off the table. They retracted the sanction to letter. Um, and so they will be discussing more of this tomorrow at the meeting. Um, it's gonna be on Teams. Whoever the Finance Chair is, I can send you that, and if the Finance Committee wants to get in, I'm sure that you can go there, all of y'all, and if you have questions, you can ask the BIA. Um, because this all comes from the BIA with regard to our 638 programs, and which was gonna affect our IDC as well as our contract support cost. So, um, that's where we're at with this now.
Yes, also, keep in mind that, um, we wanted, uh, uh, to start working with the BIA on these issues, find out what's, what's going on here, what's, what's wrong, why, how can we adjust and correct, um, some of these problems? So that's why we got involved, uh, with the BIA, and so far, it's, it's working out. We're, we're having those meetings, those conversations, on how do we make corrections and adjust to where, because we, uh, to where we can both have transparency and communication happening rather than arguing and pointing fingers at each other. So, um, I'm glad and happy that this is happening, and we're, we're taking some, some action to get involved and see how we can address these serious, serious issues um, that, that are coming down the wire here. So this is why, uh, we're engaging in a different strategy of how we can work together with BIA. Now, IHS would, uh, would also be on the table too, so. Just wanted, wanted you to know that, and we are, uh, I'm glad the comptroller and the treasurer were on, were on the last meeting, and we were able to figure out some of the miscommunication that was happening, and that some of the 425s and that some of the 425s weren't being reported, uh, lots, uh, some of the programs are not being, uh, reported, been, been reporting. So those are some of the things that we need to work on. And I'm glad this is happening. Thank you.
Thank you for that, President.
Councilwoman, all right, we have a list here. Councilman Ghostbear, Councilwoman Halverson, and then Sonia.
Thank you, Chair. Dean, so are we on Level One sanctions already? Or no?
No, we had to go on Level Two until we signed that, or I signed that engagement letter with the auditors.
So they're just gonna bypass, bypass one and go right to two?
Number two is they're, they can withhold the indirect cost. They was gonna hold the indirect cost indirect contract support dollars. I don't recall seeing a Level One sanction, but letter, but I could have over, missed it.
And you said that, um, Georgia asked you, um, upstairs knows how to do the 425s, right? Correct? So, and you said you didn't wanna turn in a 425 that wasn't accurate with the audit, right? Okay. Well, I don't know, Dean, it's just that, um, I'm looking through the report that you gave us last Thursday, and we, we went over this, like I said, there's like fifteen or so of these programs that haven't reported, and some of them since 2019. For example, like this Tijuahé Courts, they haven't reported since 2020, 2023. Well, I'm glad to hear that you already got a plan and working, working forward with the President's Office and everything. But this, this does need to get resolved, Dean. It does, um. I'm not gonna harp on you too much, we went over this last Thursday, but all I gotta say is that it needs to get done as quick as possible. And my, and like, my last question is, like, how to get to this though, Dean, for this far behind?
You know, okay, um, again, how do we get to this, you know, and I know the President hit on it, the finger point and stuff like this. A lot of it has to do with when we, when we went into, and I don't be, I don't like using this as an excuse. We went into the COVID area, came out of COVID, limited staff, no staff, getting them together to get their general levers and everything updated and recuts out. That's where the, what I, what I, in my opinion, was start delaying all this stuff. Um, and also trying to, I guess, resolve other issues when we came out. Um, so, yes, there's, in my opinion, there's a few things that came to this point.
So, um, my last question, some of the directors are for this too?
Their narrative reports.
Their narrative reports? So what are you gonna do on that part? They're doing their reports, are you gonna start discipling?
That is the staff, he also has a plan for those.
Chief of Staff, okay.
Yep, yep.
Do you have any for the Chief of Staff on that? John? John, what are you gonna start doing if they don't do the narrative reports? Because I, I mean, like I said, some of them date back to 2019, some of these directors.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, answer your question. I got the list a couple days ago from the Treasurer, and I've already started yesterday sending out the notices to each Director. Um, some of them date back to nineteen and twenty. You know, some of these directors are new, and that's, I've already got several responses, that was before my time, but like I told them, you're the boss now, it falls on you. Doesn't matter who's not here anymore. It's your responsibility as a Director to get these, uh, narrative, these quarterly reports and your annual reports submitted. Uh, just so you're aware, in case some of you get text messages, I've also cut travel for any directors until these are filled. I think it's important enough that we have to get these submitted to help alleviate some of the stress on the financial portion as far as the sanctions that are potentially facing the tribe. So, yeah, I've already started, I've probably sent out about six emails with information to each Director individually, and I will follow up, and if they automatically don't, I gave them till May fourteenth, so you guys know. I gave them till May fourteenth to submit the reports to the Contracting Office. Um, and if they don't by then, then I'll address them individually, following your guys' table of penalties.
Thank you, John. Um, Dean, since this guy touched on travel, I have a question. Uh, a couple weeks ago, you allowed a couple programs to go to Rapid, and I had some, uh, Directors call me and ask like, why are we allowed to do it? I thought, um, all travel was all programs, so when we made that motion, it was all tribal programs, so do you fall underneath that, Dean?
Um, and I, I'm not sure what you're referring to. I mean, travel, my office, our programs. And I know what the programs, if I see the Chief of Staff's approving signature on the Director's TA, then he reviewed it and he approved it. Um, but I know myself, I went up to a couple weeks ago to do an insurance review with our insurance company. Um, so that's the trip, I don't know if you're referring to that one, that's the one I was at.
No, they said that you allowed a couple programs to go on a retreat. This was like two weeks ago, and they were up there, um, I can't remember the couple of names.
Let me look though, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking there was one, it was, uh, yeah, it was a program, I know that one. Um, but I don't.
I think they said it was EAP and, um, clinical lab, I think it was. They said they got to go to Rapid on retreat, and the rest of the programs ain't allowed to do stuff like that. They wanna know why is, uh, IDC getting to do that when it's all tribal programs? When the Council made that motion to stop all travel and retreats and all that, Rapid was supposed to all stop, all programs.
I hear you on that, and, I mean, it doesn't matter, but they're both, they're not IDC programs, they're outside the indirect cost budget, but still, I'm still with you on that, allowing them to, I guess, attend a retreat? So yes, uh, I definitely will pull the documents and see what the basis of it was. I know it was a retreat at, up in Rapid or somewhere.
So that's just what I'm saying though, if we're gonna, if we're gonna cater to a few of these programs, why not let the rest of them go, that's what they were saying. But either way, Dean, it just needs to be lifted and it needs to stop, because we got all these other programs, they can't go nowhere. So neither should get underneath you, they shouldn't be allowed to go anywhere, because it's causing us to get calls, and we gotta question you, and it's just, it needs to stop.
No, I totally agree with you. Um, yes.
All right, Chair, thank you.
Councilwoman Halverson.
Thank you. I'm really glad, um, you had mentioned that this is the first time in history that you've had to be on Counsel, and I think that's a great change because IDC is just as important as our general fund, especially when it comes to things financially for our tribe and for our programs. And as Counsel, we should have these concerns with what's being impacted with these 425s not being completed. I guess one of my comments that I have to say is COVID ended May fifth, 2023. It's almost two years later, and, um, they're still having delinquent reports from upstairs, it sounds like, with these 425s. Our last Chief of Staff, Johanna Dreamer, she tried to make these programs be accountable with their 425s, with their CUF accounts, with their reconciliation reports, and I have multiple emails that were CC'd and requesting those to be done so that we're not in this type of situation. I don't know what the previous Chief of Staff's job, um, have done prior to Johanna, but it just sounds like we're very delinquent in that, and there shouldn't be any reason why we're delinquent with 425s. Or, you know, I understand the audit issues, I understand the delinquency with these audits and the concerns that you're having with them. But one question that I have for you, Dean, is on your report, it says the tribe is four years delinquent with our indirect cost agreements. Can you tell me how that pertains to our audits being delinquent?
So when the indirect cost proposals are agreements, first of all, you can submit the proposals, but to get a indirect cost final rate, you need your audits. You need the final trial balances from your audits two years later to get those numbers off your trial balance to put on your proposal to submit. So that's how your indirect cost agreements work. You submit them without that, the, uh, the Business Center has no numbers to justify or work with, so you have to have your audits complete to submit your final proposal. To get away from that part of it, the tribe, we're gonna move into a direction of fix with carry forward. With, after this, we're gonna do a twenty-two, 2023 agreement. Once we get our 21 done, IDC agreement, our 20 final rate. So that will take us from 21, 22, 23, so we don't have to wait for these audits to be completed. That fix with carry forward, you could submit it for those years. So that's gonna really benefit the tribe also. But the thing about it is, again, like I mentioned earlier, we gotta wait on a parity listing when the Ongasu tribes up on top, or they'll contact us to get those finals, so. Um, the thing about it is, at least get your proposals in, we're finally getting our audits in, so we could do our final provisional rates, that's what we call, so that's how that works.
So you can't do an agreement without the audit?
You can't get a final agreement. You could get a provisional, but not a final until that's done.
So this one says the 2019 provisional rate proposal was submitted in 2024. And so our next provisional rate proposal is gonna be in 2025 at December?
So our next, uh, final provisional rate we're gonna submit, like I mentioned, I'm working on it with our IDC firm now, is 420, our final rate. Next, we're gonna do our 2023 IDC proposal, that will take care of 21, 22, 23, fix with carry forward rate, what they call it.
So what is the, what is the sanction on indirect cost agreements or audits?
Both.
Both of them?
They're not sanctioned yet.
The impending sanction. I just, um, I think it's just very concerning that as a tribe, we're getting to that point, and it doesn't sound like it's the first time, but, um, hopefully, we could get these audit situations as a tribe done, so we could get off of that possible sanction for our tribe. I just, I just don't think, I just have concerns why we're at this point as a tribe when COVID's been done for two years, when, um, we have a lot of employees who get overtime. Uh, you know, it makes me question exactly what they're working on, if they're getting so much overtime for, um, work that's supposedly supposed to be completed.
Okay, so, and I hear you there, why are we in this situation, and I have it in my report also, is if in 2023, whenever we had the agreements in front and ready to go, if those were approved and we started working on our audits and IDC agreements in '22, that's why I did them back then, so we were looking forward, so the tribe won't be in this situation. I couldn't move forwards until Tribal Council approved some agreements here, the contracts. That's why we're sitting here now, and that's included in my report.
You know, I just think we have, we kind of have a blame game with some of our programs who blame the upstairs for needing to complete these reports and saying they're the ones who completes the reports. And then some of us are told, oh, it's the, um, programs who need to complete the 425s and their reconciliation and this, that. So I'm glad today that you stated exactly who does the 425s. Thank you.
Councilwoman Littlehawk Weston.
You know, Dean, um, I think that, I'm glad that, uh, you know, you're, I guess, taking the responsibility to get the 425s done. And I think we have to, uh, allow for that to happen, because the funding agencies only acknowledge the tribe's financial records. They don't necessarily look at the program finances. You know, being a former Director, I met, we can keep a good CUF account of where we're sitting at financially, but our funding agency don't really look at that. They wanna look at what the tribe's 425s actually say about that program. So when you don't have a number year to year to get your 425s done for the program, then that's a concern. So I think that we need to, uh, make sure, and hopefully, that we can get these 425s, uh, complete, and hopefully that, uh, the accountants that oversee these programs, 638 programs, will, uh, get those 425s, uh, uh, complete, because that's what the funding agency looks at. They don't necessarily look at the, the program itself. Programs can do their report and submit it, but there's still a number behind it. And so I think that, that's something that needs to be, uh, you know, looked at. So we need to make sure that, uh, you know, we give, uh, programs have that, uh, because I, how many times in this, uh, terms prior, we had Directors come and harp about not receiving 425s in a timely manner. So we still have to acknowledge that, this isn't the first time this happened. It's been a number of terms where Directors have come and, and, uh, said we are not getting our 425 like we should. And the accountants are the only ones that do the 425s, and there's not, not saying, uh, they're not, uh, maybe getting them done, but you still have to acknowledge that, uh, that's where they come from. And so I'm really hoping that we will get it complete. Dean, I'd really hate to, you know, be sanctioned and, uh, you know, all of that. So I'm hoping that, uh, Mr. Long, uh, the Chief of Staff, is working closely with these programs to at least get the reporting part done, and, uh, and the 425s also. But that's how it works, you know, funding agencies don't care what you say, this is what I have in my CUF account, my balance, they go by what the tribe has to give them, uh, and that's the 425, so. You know, I'm just really hoping and, uh, that we will get through this. Hopefully, Dean, and I'm really hoping and, um, hope that the accountants and the program directors that are listed on that report that was given to us last week will work on getting those done. Thank you.
So just to clarify things, yes, uh, we're talking 425, that's a federal requirement that has to be done. That's what we're missing. On the internal side, my staff does quarterly CUF account reconciliations, and I have reports to justify that. Program directors, with their quarterly CUF account reconciliations internally, they should know how much carryover they have that they could spend into the next year. They shouldn't have to wait for 25, for, for 25. They should have that on their computer, at their fingertips. This is how much money I have left from this fiscal calendar year, okay, I could spend it coming into next year. So, um, that's where, I just wanted to clarify that.
Councilwoman Spotted Bear.
I think, I don't think we need to further discuss what the need for the 425s are or the, the impending sanctions that are, that are gonna happen, uh, or possibly happen. And I'm not one to tell you how to do your job, however, I have been asking for a short-term and long-term calendar in regards to how we manage, um, and what to, what our outcomes look like and what the expectations are within our programs. Um, I don't like the idea of blame gaming and who's required to do what, and who doesn't know how to do this, and who doesn't know how to do that. And Directors shouldn't be messaging Counsel representatives. Who, who do they go to? Um, and who, you know, who, who's their next higher-up and so on? I encourage you to take the lead, take the torch with this, and make sure that, you know, we, we're not sanctioned and that our Directors are getting the proper training and that they are showing up to those trainings, and that follow-through does happen, and that we do, that we are not sanctioned. And I don't think that any further, any further conversation needs to be had, and if we are sanctioned, then we're gonna come back to, you know, to you, because you are the Comptroller for the tribe. So you manage the 638. So I don't think that we're gonna go to the, the program directors, we're gonna come back to, to you, uh, Mr. Patton. And so, I, you know, I'd just like to end that there, I think you know what the requirements are. I'm looking for your report, I went through these, these packets all over, so I'm not sure what you guys are reading from. Okay, so I think you know what, what the, what the requirement is? Move forward with that. Um, I don't like the, the environment where, you know, we have to threaten Directors or make them feel that they're in a place where there, there's any hostility, but encourage them to know that they're in a position of leadership and they should know their position, their jobs and their requirements and things that need to get done and turned in in timely manner. And their, their timelines that they need to be, that need to be met, so that we don't sit in a position that, that's gonna hurt us. And there, there are timelines that they need to be, that need to be met, so that we don't sit in a position that, that's gonna hurt us. And I think that's all I need to say about that.
And thank you for that, but yeah, and I'm in that same position where I always look out for the best interests of the tribe, and I'm not one of those ones that I feel point fingers here and there. I'm one of those ones that let's move forward. We can't fix what's back there. Let's fix it and move forward and let's work together and get this rolling. I mean, I know what we have to do.
Councilman Kelly.
Hey, Dean, uh, I'm, I'm not gonna beat you to death today, but, uh, I, I have one thing for, uh, for you, you know? Like, what is the current provisional rate that we're using right now?
Right now, some funding agencies are allowing us to use forty, I can't hold on that one right now, forty-seven percent. And that's based on our twenty-twenty provisional rate. There's some funding agencies that I've been in conversation with, they're allowing that. They funded our twenty-five funding, let's say Master Health, I trust. They funded us at that twenty provisional rate. So I can't think of forty-three oh one or somewhere around here.
Okay, with, with that being said, I'm, I'm not gonna carry it. I guess, like we said earlier, man, there's been too much dialogue on this and, and we already know where it's at, so. Uh, just a recommendation for the chairman, you have ultimate signature authority on all six thirty-eight contracts. Before you signed that, and it's only a recommendation, you need to be aware that these four-twenty-fives need to be attached to make sure we're in compliance, because it's his responsibility to sign off on all these con, six thirty-eight contract documents, which in turn will have him force you to make sure you're in compliance also. Thank you.
Yes, um, if I can comment, Dean, um, uh, that's why we were getting involved. Uh, that's why we, we need to make sure these things are happening. That's why we're asking for more financial documents, all these things. It's not to attack anybody, it's to correct. How can we get this done in a timely manner? This is a serious issue. If we do, if, if it was to happen, we go on sanction, there goes your paycheck. So this needs to happen. Uh, there was, like I said, there was miscommunication, but we got the two parties to the table. We made that correction, we made some adjustments, we're on the same page. It's one of the things that weren't happening is the four-twenty-fives weren't being reported. So that's why BIA was actually thinking that we, we weren't doing anything. We were just sitting here. But that's what you got to hear, and that's where we gotta make that connection. That's why, uh, we decided to get involved and have these meetings. And we're gonna continue to have more meetings, uh, on the, on the same level with BIA, without pointing fingers, without, without arguing. We're, we're, we're coming together, uh, and try to resolve. We're trying to resolve these things. BIA wants us to, to succeed, but we gotta do our part. And it's in our internal controls that is where the problem lies. And we need to make adjustments to, um, um, to become compliant with, uh, BIA also. So we gotta work together on that. That's all I have to say.
Councilwoman Halverson.
Um, Mr. Patton, just one final comment and one, um, a few questions. Um, the Finance Committee and the Tribal Council recently gave you, uh, an additional worker for your office to help you ease those burdens of what you have to go through as a comptroller for our tribe with the responsibilities that you have. Um, I guess my question is, um, are all of your workers cross-trained in the same training to adequately complete those? Or is there something today as council that we can find as a solution to help you to ease those burdens with maybe, um, making a motion to supply you with additional workers? Or do you feel like you have adequate staff to, um, meet those deadline dates?
I feel I have adequate staff based on the space that I have up there. Um, and plus you mentioned that I did use a job description for a comptroller assistant. There was other vacant positions right now under indirect cost that I had to stop. And then I need to know what kind of indirect cost I got coming in now. That would tell a lot tomorrow. Um, so I feel we have, I mean, with the space we have, we have, we have to have adequate, adequate, and they know what they have to do. I had a meeting with them Friday morning, my staff, so they're well aware of what needs to be done.
Yeah, I do know a, a lady who specialized in IDC that would, um, I feel like would be beneficial to the tribe to help with those IDC. She specializes in IDC. But if you feel like your staff meet that, are they cross-trained? So if one employee's gone, another employee would take their job? Or are they all working on it, or is it just one specific person?
If one of the accountants was out, there's an account up there that will go in and fill in for them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I do believe we have a motion on the table. We need a second. Second by Councilwoman Littlehawk Weston to approve the comptroller, the report. Or, uh, to accept the comptroller's report. Secretary, call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yeah.
Donra Ghostbear.
Yes.
James Cross. George Jimmer Jr. Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
David Poyer. Oh, Little White Man.
Yes.
Garfield Still. Lane Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Maya Weston.
Yes.
David Kelly.
No.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
B. Frandl.
Yes.
Troy Little.
No.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston.
Ah.
Sixteen yes, two no, two not voting. Motion carried. Thank you for coming today, Dean.
Thank you. Thank you, tribal council. I look forward to seeing you next month.
All right. But with good news, right? All right. Okay, so we're gonna move on to our next agenda item, which is land. Land is, has no agenda items. Um, we're gonna jump into the Finance Committee, and at this time, I'll turn it over to the Finance Chair.
Ordinance of the Tribal Council of Oglala Sioux Tribe amending the Financial Management Manual of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. Um, I'm gonna skip the sovereignty clause, the, down to the fourth, whereas, whereas the Tribal Council adopted a Financial Management Manual by ordinance number zero-nine dash one-three on March thirteenth, two thousand nine, and whereas the Tribal Council amended the Financial Management Manual in, in ordinance numbers twelve dash zero-five, fourteen dash ten, fourteen dash fifteen, and seventeen dash twenty-seven. And whereas ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-one, ordinance amending the Financial Management Manual of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, section zero-two point two-zero-four, President delegates to the President the authority of a chief operating officer. And whereas to perform the services required of a chief operating officer, such as preparation of the annual budget and overseeing the operations of the tribe's financial department, the President requires immediate and unfettered access to the tribe's financial records. And whereas the Finance Committee would consider proposed revisions to the Financial Management Manual by the President on March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, and recommends their adoption. Now therefore be it ordained that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe hereby amend chapter two, Staff Responsibilities. Section zero-two point zero, two-zero-four, President of the Financial Management Manual of the Oglala Sioux Tribe to read in its entirety as follows. The President is the chief operating officer of the tribe and provides overall direction to the staff to assure that tribal council policies are followed and expectations are met. General duties of the President in the area of financial management include the following. Number one, serves as a primary negotiator with federal funding agencies on grant and contract matters. Number two, recommends to the tribal council situations that require litigation. Number three, negotiates major contracts to be performed by outside firms. Number four, serves as an executive board representative on determining the annual allocations for programs under the BIA Tribal Priority Allocation System. Participates in all meetings and negotiations regarding the Tribal Priority Allocation System. Reviews and approves the annual indirect cost proposal prior to its submission to the Department of Interior Office of Inspector General. Complete and timely access to all OST financial records in the custody of the OST Treasurer. This shall include remote access, read only to all OST accounts at all financial institutions. Authority to communicate with access to all internal and external auditors regarding previous and current pending audits. Access to all operational cost information, including revenues, expenditures, and indebtedness, salary and benefits received by elected and appointed officials of the tribe. Number ten, authorized to release any of the above described financial to each tribal council person in their desired format, so they can better serve their fiduciary obligations to this nation. Assist the, number eleven, assist the treasurer and other financial matters as required by the treasurer. And be it further ordained that the following foregoing amendments shall take effect immediately and be it further ordained that the Financial Management Manual of the Oglala Sioux Tribe as adopted by ordinance number zero-nine dash one-three and as amended by ordinance numbers twelve dash zero-five, fourteen dash one-zero, fourteen dash fifteen, and seventeen dash twenty-seven, and as further amended by this ordinance is attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference certification.
Motion by Councilwoman Littlehawk Weston. Second by Councilman Little. Secretary, call for the vote. Oh, we got a question? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I just have to ask, because I wasn't here for the meeting during this, um, and I guess for the chair, can you explain this? Can you explain this ordinance regarding the Financial Management Manual? Just reading along with you, can you just explain what that, um, what it entails? Because it seems, uh, according to the Financial Management Manual, there's no, there's no changes to what the role is. So what are the changes?
I guess it's, oh.
This is for the Finance Chair.
Oh, okay.
So, um, during that meeting, his, uh, the President's attorney brought in this list of, uh, and I wish I had that. Do you have a copy of that, Chairman? That document that, um, Sandwin brought in. If we can give that to Julie, them are the reasons why they wanted these changes.
And I believe that request came from the Treasurer, that what we had to do and to get this approved. So this is the, what we came up with.
That, that, it isn't a request from the Treasurer. The Treasurer, this is the process that she had them follow. It's not a request from her, as well. She stated at that meeting that day.
Yeah, yeah. Were, were you done, Councilwoman? We can move on to another question.
Yes, I apologize. I just, I couldn't make a, a vote without knowing.
Okay, Councilwoman Littlehawk Weston.
No, just to kind of update, uh, Ms. Spotted Bear. The President, I think you might have been in the office when he went up there and wanted, uh, reports. And, uh, they told him he had to go through this process, gotta come to the Finance Committee for approval. And what was told is that he has to come to council with it for approval. That's the reason why, uh, Finance Committee, he brought it to the Finance Committee. Finance Committee did approve it, and it's in front of us as council. And all it is, is gonna read only, he's allowed to read only the accounts of the tribe. And so that's what he is bringing forward to the council through his, um, through his office, that he's gonna be allowed to just read only information. So that's what that's about.
That ain't true. Sonia, there's eleven amendments in here.
But as part of the financial, uh, Financial Management Manual, I think they just cited all the things that the, the, uh, President is, uh, basically like a CFO, kind of a, of, uh, of the tribe, so he needs to know what's going on with the finances of the tribe, is what we were told. So that's the reason why it's here.
And it's nothing against anybody in this, uh, circle here. It's just, uh, gaining access to financial records, so we can make some decisions if necessary. Yeah, go ahead.
Can I respond? Can I respond?
Go ahead.
If, if this was regarding the, when I was in the Treasurer's office during that time, um, the, I didn't see no problem with the President having access. I think it was in the manner the attorney went up there. Um, he was very, uh, intrusive and very direct. He, uh, he walked in and he said, um, I want all the financial, or the President wants all the financial management, uh, or all the finances in its native form in these, um, thumb drives. Um, he wants them on here immediately. He wants them on here now. Um, and it just, it was very uncomfortable, and so the Treasurer did ask, uh, where's the President at? He should be asking for them. There was no notice. There was no, um, there was no, you know, it was just re, really intrusive. It was uncomfortable for me. I even asked, where's the President at? Uh, so I don't have a problem, because he is a CFO. Uh, and it, I think they read to him, read the, to the attorney in there that, you know, he does have access to read only. Uh, he does have access to all the financial documents when he wants it. So I didn't make any comment in that room. I didn't say anything. I sat there and I witnessed, um, everything that was on camera as well. So that's why I'm asking, if this stems from that meeting, uh, in that, in the Treasurer's office?
No, it stems from other issues too, so they're just ask, asking for access. And this is, this was a procedure I was told to, uh, the direction I was told to come, so that's, that's, I'm following the, the recommendations. Go ahead, Councilman.
Recommendations of who?
Uh, the Tre, uh, Treasurer.
Treasurer? I thought she just told you to follow a procedure. She didn't guide you in your decision.
She just, she told us to come, uh, submit a letter and bring it to committee.
Um, can you explain to us this whole process now? Since you wanna, you're the CFO.
What process is that?
Our finances. What are you gonna do to improve our finances?
Well, I'm not here to improve. I'm, I'm here just to look at, making sure we're on track. Um, and make sure that if, if I need documentations, I can go up there and pull some with, without, and it's only, read only as you, as you can see. And it's, it's, it's just plain, plain and simple.
But what track are you talking about? To, on track, you say? What track?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, I'm not sure what you mean, because you say to keep us on track. So I'm just wondering, what track are you referring to? If you're a chief finance officer, then that, you're.
Well, let me, let me, let me put, let me, aren't you worried about what's going on with all these executive orders? All these, all.
Trump's, Trump's era, or from Washington, D.C.
It chokes, pickles down, all the way to, um, down to the tribe.
See, that, that's the explanation I was looking for. That's the explanation I wanted to hear. But here's one other, um, opinion I have. If we sign everything over to you, so you're our chief financial officer and you're in charge of everything, I would feel more safe. more safe if we were to put you with one of our attorneys. Because attorneys, God bless their souls, they are really our opinions. And I would feel better if you was put back under the legal office of the tribe instead of having a separate attorney. Because I kind of noticed how they work against one another. And I kind of noticed how your attorney kind of works against the tribe also.
How did he work against the tribe?
Just at our last, um, hearing we had. He brought forward folders. He brought forward folders that already had predestined opinions on it.
I think he was trying to
Well, I don't think you can speak for your attorney. I think he's speaking for himself when he did that.
What I asked him to do is, um, to bring transparency within our, uh, this circle here. And that's basically what he did. He said, okay, we'll spell it out and we'll try to make it as simple as possible. We'll pass out these binders. And we'll, we'll try to educate how we want to, um, communicate and be more transparent. It's not against you. Why would I have against attorney against the, the tribal council? I, I don't know.
But for respect for your office, the position you hold, you have that authority already as the president to demand transparency. You have that without any outside input. That should come from your voice.
I, I really don't agree with that because sometimes the things I do, you, everyone in here questions that authority.
Excuse me, I want to call a point of order here. We've got a motion on the floor and I believe we're discussing this, this is important topic, but it's off the topic.
So with that, we're gonna move on. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
We're gonna move on, but I want to just say that, uh, there's no difference when any one of us council people want to go upstairs and ask for reports. Any one of us. We're free to go up there and get reports as we want. And president goes up there, no, no, you read only. And you got to go through the Finance Committee to get approval and then to the council. So even though he's our president and, yeah, he is, but it doesn't matter. You know, indirect cost budget, we approved it. So if it's an issue, you could deal with it in Finance Committee, but the bottom line is we are approved, the indirect cost budget and the general fund budget. And some of you guys approved it. So now when you have someone that is helping with transparency, accountability, which we as council constantly say all the time in Finance Committee, what is happening? We all questioned why? We want to put a stop to it. Well, I'm not going to be sitting here putting a stop to anything. President has a right to know what our finances should look like. Just like the Finance Committee. As Finance Committee, doesn't matter, Ryan, I'm talking. You know, Finance Committee has a right to know where our finances are every Finance Committee meeting. And the president has a right to know that also. We should not put a stop to that because we are not happy with the attorney that he works with. That should not be the problem. You know, we have attorneys that work for us in legal office. Sometimes we don't agree with. But we don't say anything against him. So that's another thing. So again, I just want to say that, uh, he has to come through the council to get approval. But everyone else, we can just go upstairs and get a report if we want to.
Okay, we're gonna run the motion. Thank you. And we're gonna run, it's not going nowhere, Councilman. It's not going nowhere. Okay. Secretary call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales?
I'm going to abstain.
Don Roy Ghostberg?
Yes.
James Cross?
No.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear?
I've, I wasn't here for the meeting. And I'm still reading through and it still aligns with if it's with the ordinance, I can't make a decision, but it's you have access to, according to this, you have access and if you're having issues with getting access to the finances, I really encourage you to bring it to this circle that if they're giving you issues with that, I believe you should bring it here. So at this time, I'm, I'm gonna have to abstain from this vote.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
No.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Poyer? Bo Little White Man?
No.
Garfield Steele? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yeah.
Tyler Lunderman? Norman Standing Soldier?
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
No.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
No.
Beef Randall?
No.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Seven yes, ten no, two abstain, motion fail.
Okay, number two, ordinance, uh, resolution of the tribal, hold on. Resolution, resolution of the Gualsu Tribal Council of the Gualsu Tribe rescinding Resolution number twenty one dash one eighty until final determination of actual ownership under the lease of T one 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 eight three under Resolution number eleven dash thirty four X B. Whereas the Gualsu Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as a supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the U S Constitution Article Six and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty one, one stat seven four nine and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty eight, fifteen stat six three five and continues the nation to nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas I'm gonna skip the section sixteen, Article Four down to the fourth, whereas the Gualsu Tribe previously approved the president and the treasurer to negotiate the purchase of the hangar and certain other property and enter into a lease with the Gualacota Air Rescue. Whereas during the process of negotiating, it came to the attention of the Gualsu Tribe that pursuant to the previous B I A lease executed by David Plume on behalf of Rural Healthcare Logistics, the party originally involved in the lease of allotment number T dash one 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 eight three as well construction and improvements on said property that there were questions about ownership of the improvement. Now, whereas the Finance Committee recommends that Resolution number twenty one dash one eighty be rescinded until final determination of ownership and the interest of the improvements on allotment number T dash one 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 eight three are determined. Now therefore be resolved that the Gualsu Tribal Council hereby rescinds the authority granted to the treasurer and the president to negotiate a purchase agreement for improvements on allotment number T dash one 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 eight three. Certification, motion to approve.
Okay, we have motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Second by Councilman Poyer. Secretary call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Don Roy Ghostberg?
No.
James Cross? George Dreamer Junior?
No.
Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
No.
David Poyer? Bo Little White Man? Garfield Steele? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman? Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
David Kelly?
No.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Beef Randall?
Yes.
Troy Little?
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Okay, it's fourteen yes, five no. When not voting, motion carried.
The resolution of Gualsu Tribal Council of Gualsu Tribe to be assistance for propane, wood, and electricity, electricity payments through the O S T Resource Office from May thirty first, twenty twenty five through October first, twenty twenty five, skipping into the fourth, whereas the Gualsu Tribe provides energy assistance to tribal members through its Resource Office. And whereas the funds available for such assistance is limited and energy assistance needs to be directed to those times of the year when the weather is more severe. Whereas the O S T Finance Committee of the Tribal Council met on the seventeenth day of April, twenty twenty five and voted to recommend limiting for propane, wood, and electricity payments through the O S T Resource Office during the summer and forward it to the Tribal Council for final approval. Now therefore be resolved that the Gualsu Tribal Council does hereby approve suspending the energy assistance for propane, wood, and electricity payments through the O S T Resource Office starting May first, twenty twenty five and reinitiating available assistance on October first, twenty twenty five, uh, certification, motion to approve, um. Chair, real quick, uh, the reason for this is, uh, that portion of the, of the Resource Office was, was getting depleted pretty fast. And, uh, they, uh, we wanted to make that, that portion last for the fall, fall time too, when it gets cold again. So that's the reason that this was passed to finance.
Okay, motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Second by Councilman Rosales. Go ahead, question.
Yeah, Chair, um, I think we need a report from the Resource Center. There's a lot of money that goes through there and checks and everything else. Um, I think we need an update from them. They haven't gave us one last, last month. They give us reports. But far as their report, I mean, verbal, I think they need to get here and give us one. I know we got it, but I think we need to get a verbal report to go over it with them. Last month too, they did the same thing. So I don't know if they need, if somebody makes a call, but I want to hear a verbal report from the Resource Center. I just seen staff here earlier. I mean, Ed, where'd that go?
Ed? Steph Mira? Steph, uh?
Cooney.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, Steph's online.
Oh, she's online. Go ahead. Did you hear the question?
Yeah, they needed a verbal report. Um, the report is in the back of the finance report of the treasurer's report. So the Gualsu Tribe Resource Office was designed to provide a place for tribal members to go for assistance. It will also be a place that can help tribal members seek outside assistance. Recently, Fred Bringsen back, Charlotte Conroy, and Kateri Weston have been selected for the O S T Resource Office. Fred is the veteran coordinator, Charlotte is the youth coordinator, and Kateri is the overall supervisor of the coordinators. Edwina Tobacco, Debra Ironcloud, Lydia Bearkiller, Hansy Weaselbear, Robert Brewer, Starr Cooney, Harry Zephyr, Mo Lofer, Elaine Stale, Savannah Janice have been active federal monitors for the O S T Resource Office. The O S T Resource Office is located below the Chief of Staff Office, four four two Apache Drive Suite Two, Pine Ridge, South Dakota. We have two phones from Golden West that have been implemented. Go ahead.
We could read this. I just want to go over like how much do we got left in our budgets, who we all helped. That's, that's what I want to get, get down to this because I'm not seeing nothing but who y'all helped and what kind of money we got left too. I mean, you got some graphs here, but
Mm-hmm.
I'm not seeing
So with the, with the graphs and there's numbers too, if you read it, um, with the elderly veteran assistance, if you go to page two, since the Resource Office has been open, the office has assisted two hundred and fifty one Pine Ridge tribal members, one hundred and seventy six White Clay tribal members, one hundred and twenty one Winditnee tribal members, one hundred and eighteen Porcupine tribal members, one hundred and forty two Pass Creek tribal members, one hundred and thirty four Wakabamne tribal members, one hundred and twenty nine Medicine Root tribal members, eighty five Lake Creek tribal members, and fifty Egonest tribal members. A total of one thousand two hundred and six tribal members were assisted from the utility resource, which would be the general elderly and veteran altogether. The general assistance by the district, the O S T Resource Office has processed seven hundred and twenty four propane applications, six hundred and eighty five electricity applications, two hundred and forty three wood applications, and sixteen other fuel applications for all districts of Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. Um, there's also a process of hardships of two hundred and fifty two tribal members from Pine Ridge Indian Reservation overall. The O S T Resource Office has assisted eighty two tribal members for Pine Ridge, thirty two tribal members from Wakabamne, twenty five tribal members from Lake Creek, sixteen tribal members from White Clay, thirty four tribal members from Pass Creek, thirty four tribal members from Winditnee, eleven tribal members from Medicine Root, ten tribal members from Porcupine, and eight tribal members from Egonest. A total of two hundred and fifty two tribal members have utilized the financial assistance. Three thousand one hundred and twenty six tribal members reservation wide have utilized the general assistance funds. The, as far as the youth assistance, the O S T Resource Office had assisted eleven Wakabamne youth, eight White Clay youth, nine Lake Creek youth, seven Medicine Root youths, one Egonest youth, seven Pine Ridge youth, six Porcupine youth, and seven Winditnee youth. A total of seven, seventy seven youth assistance and eighty six educational expense assistance has been processed since January twenty twenty five. That's just with the youth. We have elderly. Um, again, the O S T Resource Office processed applications for the elderly that are over the age of fifty five years old. Elderly activity assistance.
Steph.
Three.
Steph, do you have a list of who y'all helped?
You need a list of people?
Yeah, who you helped and who was doing all the wood orders and yeah, I just, that's the stuff I want to see.
Okay. The federal monitors processed that, but I can get that printed and provide that to you.
Yeah, and, uh, if you can just get that to us, that's, 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 that's what I'm looking for. Well, I see, I
Okay, just the names of everybody. We also have, um, people who are, um, when I send you the list, we have people that are already maxed out in the red. So that means that are maxed out need to go into financial literacy classes.
Okay, thank you.
Got a question. Go ahead, Councilwoman Spotted Bear.
Ms. Cooney and, uh, for Pine Ridge District for the hardships, of those eighty two, and keep in mind, this is the April report, so one month. How many of those come from our, our houseless population?
Out of Pine Ridge, uh, eighty two tribal members for that, for hardships. Um, from eighty two, it'll probably most likely be thirty tribal home, um, houseless. I don't like to say homeless. They're just houseless.
Yeah. Right. So when we're recommending, we're recommending, um, financial, financial readiness training for our houseless, where are we recommending them to? Because if we're recommending Because if we're recommending them to financial readiness, obviously, they have to go somewhere, so which classes, or who provides those classes?
Mazza Scott OTP is providing financial literacy classes.
So of the eighty-two, over thirty of them are houseless that are utilizing the hardship?
Only one time.
So they're counted as our Pine Ridge numbers?
Yes, because on their district, it states Pine Ridge in on their application.
Thank you.
Also, I just want to suggest to you guys that it is, it's very stressful, and I know you guys don't want to look into it, but I really, the Resource Office has been a place that connects our people with a tool of support and knowledge that they need to become independent and self-sufficient. So which means that we do not really deny anybody at the Resource Office. We actually refer them. We refer them to tribal programs and nonprofit organizations that have available assistance. But at this time, there's actually hardly any assistance that can be offered by the tribal programs. So that's an issue.
Councilwoman.
Go ahead.
Thank you. You know, along with the Resource Center, and I'd also see if we could have the Energy Office, LEHIP Office here, too. They recently put out a statement that they're unable to provide financial assistance to low-income housing members through the LEHIP program. And so I'm also finding hardships on where to refer our tribal members to receive help. A lot of our households out there are struggling right now with the LEHIP not being able to provide the assistance that were guaranteed. And I'm not sure why that Energy Office is operating under the circumstances when it's a state-funded program, and we shouldn't have those issues right now. I know there's been a statement out that that Energy Office might not be a program no longer. And so shutting off our members from Resource Office through the tribe for propane, wood, and electricity at this time should be vital, or we should make an exception for shut-offs at least. If a tribal member is threatened with a shut-off, I think we should have some sort of solution for them right now. Not everybody has a job right now, we have eighty percent. No programs through Energy Office, no Resource Office. I think right now we have to create some kind of emergency situation. So if we could make an amendment to provide emergency assistance through the Resource Office for shut-offs on this resolution, I would support that. But other than that, I'm not going to support this resolution because our members out there do need help, and they are facing a lot of hardships. But if we could get Energy Office here to explain why they're not assisting our members, I would appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Councilwoman.
I also like to stress that there is the ICBBG-ARP grant. It's also called the Oyate Wachozon IP Grant. Those funds were drawn down. And there's four hundred thousand dollars that was provided through the utility program. So, I would like to stress to you guys that those funds are available to be APV'd out for utility assistance and rental assistance. Thank you.
Councilwoman Spotted Bear.
Thank you, I didn't get to finish asking my question, so thank you, President, for allowing me to finish, I had to sign a document. And I believe Ms. Cooney just answered my second question. If you can clarify what you just stated in regards to that grant, I know that was something that you were working on prior to the last time we talked about that grant, and what opportunity it affords. And also, we have over a hundred job vacancies that are out there, that are not being applied to. So, do you have job applications at the Resource Office that our constituents can also be encouraged to apply for? That's over a hundred job applications, our job opportunities for our people to apply for as well. So if you can explain the grant and also the job opportunities available.
Okay, so with the Oyate Wachozon IP Grant, it was, I did a second extension for it to be completed in June. I believe Tyler Yellowboy is requesting a third extension to extend this grant. With the, with the Oyate Wachozon IP Grant, it is for the Water Schmil project for Chuck Jacobs. There's funds available for him to replace that Water Schmil. There's also funds available to provide water to thirty homes. We have ten homes right now that people are living in their homes with no water. So that's what that's used for, funds are set aside for those thirty homes, and the top ten that are highlighted should be the first ones to get connected to water. And then the, another piece of it would be the minor home repairs, and that is, it is allocated to, I think it is seventy-seven families on that list, and that is for like a new, whatever they need in their bathroom renovations. So it can be like a shower or toilet bowl, or a shower and a new sink, or new flooring. And that will have up to three to five contractors for that set. With, also, the grant also includes the Water Schmil. The demolition of trailers. So there was a total of almost thirty trailer homes that need to be demolished. And all of the environmentals were all done on all of, on the entire grant. The funds were drawn down, and they just need to be implemented and acted upon. There's funds that were set aside, and the original grant, there was a total of twenty-five to thirty entities. I did not want to deal with that when reporting the grant back, so I cut it down into six to seven departments, which was water, sewer, the contractors, Chuck Jacobs, and the utility program. And that's where Tyler Yellowboy comes in, and he's in there now, and he's well aware of this, this grant. But the portion for utilities, I ended up pushing all those funds towards utilities because I didn't want to track that many entities in a short period of time. And so the utility program has a total, I think, believe, of four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in that account. And that specific portion is to be spent on utilities, which is like, again, your wood, your electricity, propane. And what I would call it at the very end of this grant is called recovery, because we are currently recovering from the COVID, the pandemic. We still have our tribal members struggling with COVID and having to stay home and not getting paid for it. So this is what the grant is for. Also, there's such thing called BABA, the Build America By Act, and that is waived on this grant. So there should be known requirements on the BABA for that. Thank you.
Ms. Cooney, and how do they apply for that? Do they, where, and where, where is Tyler Yellowboy located?
Tyler Yellowboy is located at the enrollment building. He's in that area within that building. So he would have, you would have to go through his application process. He would have to create an application.
And then the second, the second portion to my second question, there are over a hundred job openings for the tribe. Are you encouraging job applications by posting job? Are you encouraging job applying for jobs by posting job applications at the Resource Office?
Yes, we are actually sharing that on the social media site when the jobs are updated. Also, there are success stories where some people, the tribal members, they had received a hardship, and they went ahead and did an application, they have a job now. We had educational assistance where she paid for her CNA license, and now she's a CNA out of pattern. So we do have success stories, we also have elderly applying for jobs. Seventy-one years old is the most, the most recent one that I've seen. We helped with elderly assistance, and he ended up just applying for a job. And so he's seventy-one years old, so that's a great success story. But there's plenty of success stories with the Resource Office so far, with the people telling, with the feedback, with the feedback of everybody in the community and how it helped them. Thank you.
Councilwoman Howerson.
You know, with that being stated by Ms. Cooney, with that being stated by Ms. Cooney, hold on, wait till we get attention here. Okay, with that being stated by Ms. Cooney, and this resolution presented to suspend availability of that, I believe it's in the best interest of our tribal members that we refer our tribal members to the Resource Department to assist them to find resources and not suspend them. Because it sounds like from Ms. Cooney that there's a lot of available programs out to help them, and that's why that program was implemented, to find these resources for our people. And so, I don't, I don't know who made the motion on this or not, but I think it's, I don't think that we need to cut off our people from getting assistance. That Resource Department was put there for a reason, and it needs to be available for propane, wood, and electricity resource help.
So, we're not suspending the whole program, we're just suspending the funds until October first, and it was, it was brought to finance that day that if we keep, I mean, if they keep helping, which is good, but they're not going to have no funds left in the fall when the weather gets cold. And that was the reason for, I mean, I, I get it, people need help, and we need to help them, but how are we going to help them if there's no funds? If we don't, because energy, energy does that. Energy, when energy had funds in the past, they would suspend, I mean, they wouldn't, they wouldn't help with some energy costs from, I think it was May first or June first to October first, April first. And I think, I think when Na Chau was in there, he told us the date was this year, was April fifteenth. So, I mean, it has happened in the past, and we got through it, but we're just looking out for the fall time when the weather gets cold, October, November, December. That was the reason for this, and we're not suspending the off, still go there and get help with the Resource Office on where to go or, or what. So we're not suspending the whole office, just the availability of funds until October.
Councilwoman Howerson.
You know, with that being stated, I still believe if this motion is passed for this resolution, and our members go to the Resource Department for propane, wood, or electricity from here until October, that they'll be told that they no longer have to, that no longer have that ability to help them. So I think that this resolution should have some other language where they're still assisting those members to find financial help. Like they said, the Utility Office has these resources. It sounds like, sounds like from Ms. Cooney that they have found quite a number of different programs and grants to help our members that our members are not aware of. And possibly, you know, the Resource Department, maybe Ms. Cooney can go district to district to give a list of what is being provided for who and for what, and what type of assistance is out there to our cap offices. But I don't believe that we should suspend any any accounts that are meant to help our people. We created this program, this resource program, to help our members, and right now, Energy Office is not helping. And I, I still would like them to either come to commit, committee, or council to address that, why are they not helping our members? You know, a lot of our members out there are facing hardships, but like I, if this motion does pass, I would ask if there's amendment to include that we, we, we help members with exemption of shut-offs, that we're able to help people who are being threatened with shut-offs. Thank you.
Councilwoman Greenwell.
So I think John Long's coming to give you a report on the Energy Office. There's some issues with some reporting requirements that were missed on that as well. But we're always in this situation, this is nothing new. For the last ten years that I'm aware of, before I was on council, we're always in this situation where people need help. We're one of the few tribes that do what we do, and that's give away a majority of our funds to help with energy and a million other things that they're helping out with that they're not talking about today. Some of it seems foolish, but on the other hand, what I don't want to see happen is this winter, people freezing to death because it was cold this winter. There was days that we went a week, like twenty below zero. And that's, you know, when the funding came out, that's what I prioritized. I got all kinds of requests, some of it was foolish stuff. I just need some money because I'm having a birthday party for somebody, and it was a Friday. It's always on a Friday. What happens on Friday, everybody's trying to get that check before it, everybody heads off on the Friday. But what they're telling you is we're going to run out of money if we keep spending the way we're spending. We already started off like a million and three in debt from, you know, things that happened. Unfortunately, us new guys, that's something that we have to deal with at the start. But imagine if we took four of them eight million dollars every single year and built apartments, some, some stuff in every district to help with their homeless problem. We wouldn't be where we are now. But we choose to keep on just allowing dysfunction to take all that money, and then it continues to happen. At what point does a guy grab his checkbook and say, no more? We're drawing the line, we're not going to do that this year, we're going to save four million aside every year for the next ten years, and we're going to do this now. Everybody else, we need to start watching our bills. If you could afford your bill, pay for it. Don't just assume just because this is what happens. Somebody at that office or somewhere started a rumor that they're handing out checks. So all these people showed up down there, demanding a check just out of nowhere. Come to find out that some of them were told you need to come and pay a quarter of that back here, so some of them had to come back, and somebody talked about that today. One of the people that were over there had to come and give a portion of their check to that little tent over there, so that, that's unacceptable, we need to draw a line at some point. And I don't want to see our people freeze this winter, man, that's, that's what they're trying to tell you. Slow down the spending. We got summers coming, it's going to be nice out, try to watch our spending. Because winter comes, and we get another harsh winter, man, we're going to be in trouble. We don't know what else Trump's cutting, he's still cutting stuff as we speak today. Everybody gets the same emails I get. Mario and all them, all the things he's cut already, and what he's continuing to do. It could get scary. So let's just watch our spending.
Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston, that's going to take the last question, and then we're going to call for the vote.
Yeah, I think we kind of talked this to death, and I think we've kind of talked it, talked a lot about it in our Finance Committee meeting already, and that's why it's here on council floor. But I will say that if we had the, the LEHIP working today with funding, then it would be a different story. Because they have a cooling system, cooling period where they help our people with air fans and air conditions. And during that time, our people rely on them to, for resources. And so it would have been a good thing to, to our, if our people knew that that is available to them, but today, they have no funding as of today. So right now, I know John will give us that update on that, but we only So right now, I know John will give us that update on that, but uh, we only have the resource office to um, fall back on. I will say that our people are only given so much and uh, help. Within so many days and if they use that up, they can't get help no more. They gotta wait for so many more days. And that's the reason why it's, it's uh, a lot of them are coming to us. You know, I had one this morning come to me and really asking for help because she had a light bill that was quite high, really high. And it's gonna be shut off by uh, tomorrow. But there's nothing I can do because she's already gotten help twice and her limit she's done. So I don't know what to do to help our people, but that's why the resource office was created to help our people. And so right now, you know, we have to, you know, take care of what funds we have left in the resource office and I'm hoping that. Um, we'll hear some good news with our uh, Leap office soon, you know, to take care of our people during the summer. But right now, we don't have funds in that program right now. So, you know, but we got to do what we can. Thank you.
Okay, secretary, call for the vote.
Chair. Uh, I also wanted to state that um, the energy office also has the WAPA collections as well. So um, that, that would definitely help us in the future as well.
So there was a motion made with amendment. Did you wanted to add that uh, amendment or the, for the motion maker? Councilman Jumping Eagle.
What was the amendment?
Councilwoman Howerson.
If we could allow shut offs to be assisted. It's just a um, maximum of two hundred for the shut offs, but. And that's if they didn't get help within the last three months as required by the resource office.
If they're gonna shut you, if they shut you off, you probably owe five, six, seven hundred. You know, and, and, you know, I, I, I just. Chair, I'm just gonna run, ask to run the motion as is, that we, how we read it. Because like I said, it was discussed in finance. There's a reason why. And that's because uh, that account's gonna be depleted if we don't.
Okay, secretary, call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Donna Gosper. James Cross. George Jimmer Jr.
No.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
No.
David Poyer. Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Garfield Steele. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Maya Weston.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Craig Dillon. B. Frandl.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Seventeen yes, two no, one not voting. Motion carried.
Next one is ordinance of Glauzoo Tribal Council Glauzoo Tribe to continue management of the Glauzoo Nation Waachi Pirodeo with Executive Board. And allocate one hundred thirty thousand dollars for the startup costs. Skip into the fourth, whereas the Glauzoo Coda Nation Waachi Pirodeo. Including the carnival and other related activities has required significant financial support from the tribe. Whereas the tribe has adopted financial procurement procedures, including the request for proposals. Process RFP to ensure fairness and, and economy so that tribal funds are spent wisely. Whereas the Glauzoo Nation Waachi Pirodeo require active fundraising for the events. Which is time sensitive and whereas the OST Finance Committee has reviewed the costs. And knowledge required to run a Glauzoo, Glauzoo Nation Waachi Pirodeo. Now, whereas the OST Finance Committee met on the seventeenth day of April twenty twenty-five. And voted to forward the decision of management and funding to the tribal council for final determination. Now therefore be it ordained that the Glauzoo Tribal Council does hereby allocate one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. For startup costs of Glauzoo Nation Waachi Pirodeo. Be it, be it further ordained, the executive committee will continue with management. And fundraising for the Glauzoo Nation Waachi Pirodeo to ensure that such fundraising. And planning can be conducted in a timely man, timely basis. And be it further ordained that the ordinance shall have effect immediately and shall supersede repeal. And replace, and replace all prior inconsistent laws of Glauzoo Tribe certification.
Motion. Councilman Stil. Comment, go ahead.
You know, um, I kind of, I kind of put my views. Um, of everything first in finance. And you know, my, my thought of, of, of this was that um. You know, we need to celebrate life and, you know, moving ahead and, and from what um, tragedy occurred. But that was my own personal opinion and um. You know, I, I had to sit down with my brother Brian Thunderhawk. And you know, he was, it was real emotional and, and I know the family's still. You know, taking this really hard because uh, you know, Tom was, you know, one of the best warriors we've, we had. And uh. It was out of his request, at his request and out of, out of, you know, respect for him. He asked that we, you know, respect the wishes of the fifth member and, and. And not have the powwow this year. Out of respect for his brother and the family. You know, I, like I said, a lot of my views were, were my own personal opinion. But you know, out of respect for my brother Brian. And his family. You know, I, I would uh, I would totally change my idea. My ideas and my opinions and my view on, on the powwow. And request that we, we not have the powwow this year and then that we move forward with our plans to change location like. They discussed. Um, because of how congested is, it is in that area. And what the, the secretary or the treasurer recommended was that each district get ten thousand. Each of that money given and we could have our own celebrations in our, in our communities and our district. So. I know the council, you know, the finance committee, we had a tough decision that day to make. And, and I was under the impression, you know, that, like I said, that everything was okay, but after speaking with my brother Brian and. You know, even, even sitting there and like I said, the emotions and he, seeing him cry, it just, it changed my whole thought on this. So. I, I'm in favor of not having a powwow this year. Thank you.
Okay, councilwoman Spotted Bear.
Thank you, President. And with respect to, to that, and if that's his motion, I'd like to second that. Um, that was a hard time last year. I was in that circle when all of that happened. Um, there was a lot of tragedy. Um, there was a lot of fear in that circle and a lot of things that happened that. I didn't like to see amongst our own people. Um, being a combat veteran and going through a lot of that anxiety and seeing a lot of the fear. Within our own people hurt me far worse than what I seen in combat. And so I'd like to second uh, Councilman Stil's motion if that's his motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Stil, second by Councilman Spotted Bear. Do you have a question?
Chair, wasn't it, just for the record, wasn't it also uh, agreed upon at executive board that you guys also had. In your executive board meeting, plans of, of, I mean, in support of not having it also?
Yes, yes, that was passed in the executive board to not have. Um, the, the powwow and rodeo. Um, out of respect. Um. And uh, to give the districts uh, I believe ten, ten thousand. Same thing that Councilman Stil just suggested.
So with that, we'll uh, I'll run the motion. Go ahead, Councilman Ghost Bear.
Thank you, Chair. I know Brian Thunderhawk for a while too. Um. He came down and I talked to him and I had his brother, um, talked to him for about two hours. He cried to me. He felt bad. Um, you know, it gets me a little emotional because uh. My dad is right now around that area with my son and he, they seen everything. But you know, you guys, I mean, I know that happened. I feel sorry for Brian. I really do. But what about the, our people though that look forward to the celebration when there's nothing else going on this summer around here? Um. I don't, I just don't want to say other than, you know, our people look forward to this. It's a good time. I mean. I know this is coming up and the executive board denied it, but. I just not agreeing with this because too many of our people are, are looking forward to this for a good time, you guys. They really do. Nothing happens around here all summer other than baseball leagues. You know, people go to basketball tournaments off reservation, but. I think we need to still have this celebration. Giving ten thousand dollars to the districts. I mean, that's just, we're gonna have a little district powwow, but. I just think we need to have it. I guess there's a motion on the floor, but that's just my comment. But thank you, Chair.
Yes, secretary, call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Donna Gosper. James Cross.
Yes.
George Jimmer Jr. Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
No.
Anna Halverson.
No.
David Poyer. Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Maya Weston.
Yes.
David Kelly. Craig Dillon.
No.
B. Frandl.
Yes.
Troy Little.
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Yeah.
Eleven yes, seven no, one abstaining, one not voting. Motion carried.
Next one is ordinance of Glauzoo Tribal Council Glauzoo Tribe amending the OST Personnel Policy. And Procedures Manual, ordinance number eighteen dash twenty-two as amended to, to reduce the required years. For political appointees and elected officials for retirement benefits. Skip into the fourth, whereas on August sixteen, two thousand eighteen, the tribal council enacted ordinance number eighteen dash twenty-two adopting the personnel policies and procedure manual. And ordinance number twenty-four dash zero-two amended the P, PPPM to include a retirement benefit. And whereas the retirement benefit requires five consecutive years of employment, which would require elected officials to have at least three consecutive terms. And whereas the PPPM, PPPM should be amended to allow a reasonable opportunity to elected officials and appointees to participate. In the retirement benefit to elected officials. And whereas the OST Finance Committee has reviewed. And recommends the proposed amendment of the tribe's Personnel Policies and Procedure Manual. To change the years required for elected officials and appointees in the ability to receive a retirement benefit. Now therefore be it ordained that the Glauzoo Tribal Council does hereby approve amending the OST Personnel. Policies and Procedure Manual as adopted by ordinance number eighteen dash twenty-two as amended and amend section twenty-five dash twenty-six A and D. Require retirement benefit to read as follows with changes shown through strike through and additions shown in red. Section twenty-five dash twenty-six Retirement Benefit A. Permanent and temporary full-time or part-time employees who have successfully worked for at least five consecutive years. And political appointees and elected officials who have successfully worked. Or completed political terms for at least three consecutive years are eligible for retirement benefit. Upon retirement from tribal employment after the age of sixty or older. The retirement pay, pay, package may be paid to the maximum. In accordance with the following scale based on the number of eligible years with part-time employee benefits to be. Prorated based on the employee's proportion of hours worked. Number one. Nine years of service up to one dollar per day. Calculated at five days a week, fifty-two weeks per year for actual years in service rounded up. Ten to nineteen years of service, oh, uh. Sorry, nu- number one should be three to nine years of service. Make that correction, Stacy. Number two, ten to nineteen years of service up to two dollars per day calculated at five days a week, fifty-two weeks per year for actual years in service rounded up. Number three, twenty to twenty-nine years of service up to two dollars and fifty cents. Per day calculated at five days a week, fifty-two weeks per year for actual years in service rounded up. And thirty or more years of service up to three dollars per day calculated at five days a week. Fifty-two weeks per year for actual years in service rounded up. Thus, a part-time employee share is calculated based on forty-hour work week, fifty-two work weeks of the year. For a total of two thousand and eighty hours a year for full-time employees. So a part-time employee who worked thirty-two hours per week for five years would have worked. One thousand six hundred and sixty-four hours per year, which is eighty percent of two thousand eighty hours. That employee would receive eighty percent of the retirement benefit, which is eighty cents. Per day at five days a week for fifty-two weeks for five years. Second example, a full-time employee who has worked for forty hours a week for five years and eight months would receive one dollar. Per day at five days a week for fifty-two weeks for six years. And be it further ordained, the retirement benefits shall continue to be paid out of available program funds. And general fund and be it further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect immediately. And shall supersede repeal and replace all prior inconsistent laws of the Glauzoo Tribe certification.
Councilman Poyer, motion by Councilman Poyer, second. Question? Go ahead, Councilman Stil.
Well, you know, I just got some feedback from some community members about, you know, elected officials receiving a retirement. Um, and it's just like the senators and the, the House of Representatives, you know, once they're out of office. And I know it's not similar, but it's, it's in that same area. Um, they get, they get their benefits, continue to get their benefits. Even while they're not servicing the people and, and that's kind of what, how they saw this as. As a retirement and getting money is that, you know, we're, we're put in here for two years and we, we do our job for two years and we get compensated for two years. And they didn't agree to uh, elected officials should get some type of retirement benefits. So I just wanted to uh, make that note.
We don't have a second. Okay, motion failed. No second. Was that it, Councilman?
Yep, for finance.
Finance, okay. Moving on to our next agenda item, HHS Committee, and at this time, I'll turn it over to the Chair.
Resolution of Glauzoo Tribal Council approving the SDS priority listing for twenty twenty-six. Number one, PR dash CW, Pineridge Water System Replacement. Number two, PR dash CS. Ogallala Lagoon Rehabilitation. Number three, PR dash CS Lift Station Generators. Number four, PR dash CW, PR four zero seven South Water Storage Tank. Moving down to the fourth, whereas the House of Human Services Committee is a standing committee of the tribal council that oversees the Indian House Service, IHS Martin Sanitation. Facilities, Construction Projects. And whereas the House and Human Services Committee. Has considered the matter on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five and did approve this resolution for presentation to the executive committee. Now therefore be resolved that the Glauzoo Tribal Council has voted to approve the following SDS. Project listing as prioritized. Number one, PR dash CW, Pineridge Water System Replacement. Number two, PR dash CW. Number two, PR dash CW Pine Ridge East Ridge Moccasin Factory Water Source Modification. Number three, PR dash CW Womble Hydrant Meter Pit and Valve Replacement. Number four, PR dash CW Kyle Water Source Improvements. Be it further resolved that the Glosu tribal council, the Glosu tribe authorizes the president or vice president of this tribe to sign any documents necessary to execute the this resolution. It's a typo there Stacy. To execute this resolution. I think, um, um, so Stacy, these don't even align up. If you look at the, the resolution on top and then the therefore be it resolved, they're different projects. So it says number two is Ogallala Lagoon. And on this on this bottom one, number two says Pine Ridge East Ridge Moccasin Factory. Therefore be there, therefore be resolved, they're two, they're different project.
Yeah, it, it should have been the Ogallala Lagoon. I'll have to address that.
So Stacy, can we include them projects on that therefore be resolved from the top, the top projects there? On that resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
I can change.
And then, and then on, on the, uh, is it number two, James? Or number three?
Number three.
The number three, the lift station generators? Uh, go ahead, James, if you can explain that.
There is a possibility that some additional funding is still pending. And if so, that project might be funded. You only get four projects to pick from that, that get these extra points. And I might not be able to wait another month to get before council to revise the letter. So I'm asking a little flexibility. If, if this pro, uh, the Ogallala, or pardon me, the lift station generators gets funded, I can move the, the next project on the list up and just rewrite the letter with the president's signature.
So that would be the Evergreen Valve and Hydrant Replacement.
Correct, sir.
Um, Chairman, if we can amend this resolution to that effect?
Yes, I got the, um, I probably saw him also in the very last whereas. In the very last whereas, um, where it says, um, did approve this resolution for presentation to the executive committee. We'll change that to tribal council.
But did you hear, did you hear the other amendment that he's requesting Stacy?
About that, um,
If that's okay, I, I'd like to make a motion to approve with them amendments.
Got it.
Well, this benefits your community, so if you want to question it, go ahead.
Okay, so with the amendments and that's your motion. Okay, motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Lunderman. Call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Donroy Ghost Bear.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior. Okay. Anna Halverson.
Yes.
David Poyer. Bo Little White Man. Garfield Still. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
David Kelly said he votes yes. Craig Dillon. B. Frando.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Seventeen yes, three not voting. Motion carried.
Thank you, Council.
The next one is, uh, resolution of the tribal council Glosu tribe approving the first amendment to the all-inclusive service agreement for the temporary healthcare professional coverage between Ogallala Sioux Native Women's Healthcare and Tribal House. Skip into the fourth, whereas Ogallala Sioux Tribe, Native Women's Healthcare and Tribal House LLC entered into an all-inclusive service agreement for temporary healthcare coverage on May second, two thousand and twenty-four. And whereas Native Women's Healthcare and Tribal House LLC have negotiated an amendment to the service agreement to allow for four one-year extensions of agreement and change the fee for Native Women's Health Care's prospective successful recruitment and employment of temporary healthcare providers. And whereas the Glosu tribe's Health and Human Services Health and Human Services Committee met on April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five and approved the first amendment to all-inclusive service agreement for temporary healthcare professional coverage between the Ogallala Sioux Native Women's Healthcare and Tribal House LLC and recommends approval by the tribal council. Now therefore be resolved that the Glosu tribal council approves the first amendment to all-inclusive service agreement for temporary healthcare professional coverage that will allow for four one-year extensions of agreement and change the fee for Native Women's Health Care's successful recruitment and employment of temporary healthcare providers. And therefore be it further resolved, the Glosu tribal council hereby authorizes the Ogallala Sioux tribe's president or vice president to execute the proposed first amendment to all-inclusive service agreement for temporary healthcare professional coverage. Motion to approve.
Okay, we got motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Lunderman. Okay, uh, just, uh, identify yourself.
Okay. Um, good afternoon, tribal council. I'm Rachel Whiteface, the Director of Native Women's Healthcare. I just wanted to make sure that these, um, terms were in there. I, I didn't get a copy of the resolution, resolution, so I couldn't modify it myself to make sure that they were. But the first term was, and I don't know if the attorney, are you the attorney?
Yes.
No, for now. The term extended for one additional year was in there. If you read that Ryan, I don't know. Was that in there?
Yep.
Okay. And then budget set to one million for this, for this year.
There's no budget in the, uh, resolution, but it says, uh,
In the contract? I mean, the contract, it's in there. It's in the contract. I was just making sure. And then just make sure that the discount structure incorporated for the buyout fees. Um, in case I want to buy out one of the providers, so. I want to make sure we have that discount incorporated. As, I don't know if it needs to be in the resolution.
This shall not exceed one million here.
Okay.
Except upon.
Um, discount structure incorporated for the buyout fees. Just in case I want to buy out one of the providers to come on us permanently. I want, I, I really negotiated that buyout fee. But it is in the original contract. I just don't know if it has to be in the resolution. Uh, Majel.
Steve, are you seeing that in there about the buyout?
Because it's, it's in the contract. I just don't know. Does it have to be in the resolution Stacy? Okay.
If you can include that, if it needs to be somewhere in the the whereas or?
It was, it was in the, um, email that, um, we negotiated and that was given to Majel. So I was just, I didn't get, that's why I said I didn't get to see the resolution.
Steve, does that need to be in the resolution?
The resolution approves the contract. If the contract has all the terms, then that's fine. I don't know. Is there a question whether the contract has all the terms?
It was just, that's what I was asking. Is this, it's in the contract. Does it need to be in the resolution? Because the other two stipulations were in there, just that buyout one wasn't in there. And I nego, I worked really hard to negotiate those buyout fees, so. I was, I, that's why I'm asking. And I didn't see the resolution, so I don't know if it has to be in the resolution.
Uh, Frank.
You had a question, Anna?
No, I was just gonna say it's in there from, um, the hours worked and the buyout fees and the email from Joey Foster.
So what I can tell you is that the resolution approves the contract. It authorizes the tribe to enter into it. Secretary will attach the contract to the resolution. So if the contract has all the terms that you want, then the resolution is fine. If you have any question whatsoever that the contract needs to be changed or it doesn't have every, anything, then I can contact Majel and find out if it's okay. But if you're sure that it's fine, then they can vote on it now. So it's, it's your choice.
Wanted to make sure all, everything was done on my end.
So that'd be my motion to approve, Chair.
Okay. So we had a second, so we'll round the motion. Secretary call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Donroy Ghost Bear.
Yes.
James Cross. George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
No.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
David Poyer. Bo Little White Man. Garfield Still. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman. Norman Standing.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Craig Dillon. B. Frando.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Sixteen yes, one no, three not voting. Motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
The next one is resolution of Glosu tribal council, the Glosu tribe approving the disenrollment of Wakinga Tuwampi Luta Looking Horse from Glosu tribe membership. Skipping the sovereignty clause, the section sixteen, article four, down to the fourth, whereas Wakinga Tuwampi Luta Looking Horse requests disenrollment from Glosu tribe membership pursuant to OST ordinance number eighteen dash zero-three enrollment code article six, section sixteen point six point one zero-two relinquishment. And whereas by motion and vote on April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, OST Health and Human Services Committee recommended that tribal council approve their request for relinquishment of Glosu tribal membership by disenrollment for Wakinga Tuwampi Luta Looking Horse. Now therefore be resolved that the Ogallala Sioux tribal council does hereby approve their request for relinquishment of Glosu tribal membership enrollment and all rights as a tribal member therein for Wakinga Tuwampi Luta Looking Horse effective immediately. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Call for the vote.
Yeah.
Donroy Ghost Bear.
Yes.
James Cross.
Oh, no.
George Dreamer Junior.
No.
Julian Spotted Bear.
No.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
David Poyer. Bo Little White Man. Garfield Still. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yeah.
Tyler Lunderman. Norman Standing Soldier.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
David Kelly.
No.
Craig Dillon. B. Frando.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Nine yes, eight no, two not voting. Motion carried.
Okay, next one is, uh, resolution of the Glosu tribal council, the Glosu tribe approving the disenrollment of Wilbur A. Yellow Horse from the Glosu tribe membership. Um, skipping down to the fourth, whereas Wilbur A. Yellow Horse requests disenrollment from the Glosu tribe membership pursuant to OST ordinance number eighteen dash zero-three, three enrollment code article six, section sixteen point six point one zero-two relinquishment. And whereas by motion and vote on April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, the OST Health and Human Services Committee recommended that the tribal council approve their request for relinquishment of Glosu tribal membership by disenrollment for Wilbur A. Yellow Horse. Now therefore be resolved that the Glosu tribal council does hereby approve their request for relinquishment of Glosu tribal membership enrollment and all rights as a tribal member therein for Wilbur A. Yellow Horse effective immediately. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Call for vote.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Donroy Ghost Bear. James Cross.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
No.
Julian Spotted Bear.
No.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson. David Poyer. Bo Little White Man. Garfield Still. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yeah.
Tyler Lunderman. Norman Standing Soldier.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston. He said he votes yes. David Kelly.
No.
Craig Dillon.
No.
B. Frando.
Yes.
Yeah.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Ten yes, eight no, two not voting. Motion carried.
Thank you, Council.
Is that it? Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman.
You got one more, Ryan?
That's it, okay. Moving on. Uh, you had a question?
Uh, just a, a, a quick comment or interjection, please. You know, uh, I was approached out in the hallway after that, after you guys ran the vote on the Ognesh stuff and the royalty coordinator had a quick question if, if I may let her have the floor for two minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, good afternoon, Council. Um, for those of you that don't know me, my name's Gala Blackhorn. Um, I've been the royalty coordinator for a few, um, years now. I work with them all year. So, first of all, with not having the power.
first of all, with not having the powwow, what I'm gonna do is ask our royalty if they're willing to carry on and continue representing uh the Lakota Nation powwow all throughout their travels as they have done this past year. Um, all I can do is hope that they are willing to take on another year. It was done in the past during the COVID years. Um, those royalty, they continued actually for three years, they carried on. Um, so my concern that I have for the royalty is um what I, what I heard Steph Cooney mentioned when she brought up the resource office. Um, that coincides with my um asking for assistance, travel assistance for the royalty. In the past, we've always done five times throughout the year, three big powwows and two local powwows. So the big powwows, we assisted them with more. The local powwows, which is in-state, was less. Um, I approached our treasurer and she denied my request to assist the royalty and directed me to utilize the resource office. Now from my understanding, the resource office only assists two times, and after that, they're gonna have to go to financial management counseling, which I don't believe should apply to our royalty. So I, I need some guidance with this. Um, I believe that we should be able to assist them as we always have in the past because they represent our people throughout the entire year, not just the one weekend during the powwow.
Um. Um, wa- wasn't they set up a budget? They weren't set up a budget, cause uh the rodeo, rodeo queen and princesses, they had a budget. Ogallaw, the, the powwow queen didn't have a budget?
No, she just straight out denied me and told me to refer them to the resource office. And I believe the rules there, you only get two two assistances and then you're, you're done.
Councilman Greenwell?
Yeah, to my knowledge, the youth funds aren't depleted, it's the other funds that are getting lower, like for the energy assistance, so, but I think they should still be able to utilize some of that youth funding in there. This would be a good reason to use it.
Councilman Still?
Thank you, chair. Um, you know, being involved with the powwow in the past, they, they always came out of the, the powwow budget, the um travel for the the royalty, and they had um, they selected five places they wanted to go to, and then they paid their, gave them their assistance. But if we're, if we're giving away ten thousand to each district, you know, that roughly leaves about a, about a forty thousand dollar budget. Um, I, I would entertain a motion to have her go to finance at the budget for those, for our royalty for the, the upcoming year. And uh, um, it'll be utilized with the forty thousand remaining. That, that'll be my, my motion.
Okay, motion by Councilman Still. You had a question, Councilwoman Spotted Bear? You're gonna second it? Okay, so second by Councilwoman Spotted Bear. Call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Donrósper? James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior? Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Poyer? Bo Little White Men?
Yes.
Garfield Still? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman? Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Lio Weston?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Nineteen yes, one not voting, motion carried.
Wopilat Fanka, council.
Okay, was that the last uh item for HHS? I believe it was. So moving on to the E and BD committee, at this time, I'll turn it over to the, the chair.
Thank you, chair. Um, I'll have the BP read the two resolutions.
Right.
Thank you, chair. Um, resolution of Ogallawasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallawasoo Tribe approving the fiscal year twenty twenty five Tribal Transportation Improvement Program, TTIP, for the Ogallawasoo Tribe submitted by the Ogallawasoo Tribe Department of Transportation. Skipping to the fourth, whereas, whereas the Ogallawasoo Tribe of the Pine Ridge, Pine Ridge Indian Reservation is federally recognized Indian tribe, organized pursuant to the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, and all pertinent amendments thereof. And whereas the tribal constitution authorizes the tribal council in article four, section one A, to advise and negotiate with the federal government on behalf of the tribe, have to manage all economic affairs and enterprises of the tribe, and section one G, to appropriate for public purposes of the tribe any available tribal council funds. And section one W, to adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogallawasoo Tribe and its membership. And whereas the direct funding agreement between the Ogallawasoo Tribal Department of Transportation, OST DOT, and the Federal Highway Administration specifies that the tribe will submit an update or annual Tribal Transportation Improvement Program, program, I think that's the typo. And whereas the OST DOT has reviewed the current conditions and needs of all the tribal transportation facilities on the Pine Ridge Reservation, and determined that the fiscal year twenty twenty five, TTIP, is valid and best suits the needs of residents on the reservation, of the reservation. And whereas the submittal of the TTIP must be accompanied by an authorized resolution of Ogallawasoo Tribal Council, and whereas on the twenty eighth day of March, twenty twenty five, the Economic and Business Development Committee of the Tribal Council met and voted to approve the attached TTIP and forward it to the full Tribal Council for final approval. And whereas the Tribal Council has considered the matter and determined that it is in the best interest of the tribe to approve the attached TTIP. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tribal Council of Ogallawasoo Tribe does hereby approve the attached Ogallawasoo Tribe Department of Transportation fiscal year twenty twenty five Tribal Transportation Improvement Program. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Rosales, second by Councilman Cross. Call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Donrósper? James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Poyer? Bo Little White Men?
Yes.
Garfield Still? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman? Norman Standing Soldier? Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Lio Weston?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Eighteen yes, two not voting, motion carried.
Thank you, council. Uh, next I have resolution of Ogallawasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallawasoo Tribe to update the National Tribal Transportation Facility Inventory in accordance with twenty-five CFR part one seventy. Skipping the first three, whereas, the fourth, whereas the Ogallawasoo Tribe of the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation is a federally recognized Indian tribe, organized pursuant to the Indian Reorg- Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, and all pertinent amendments thereof. And whereas the tribal constitution authorizes the tribal council in article four, section one A, to advise and negotiate with the federal government on behalf of the tribe to manage all economic affairs and enterprises of the tribe. And section one G, to appropriate for public purposes of the tribe any available tribal council funds. And section one W, to adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of Ogallawasoo Tribe and its membership. Whereas the authority to place additional routes and update existing routes in the NTTFI is stated in twenty-five CFR part one seven zero four four two, one seven zero four four three, and one seven zero four four four. And whereas OST DOT will make the following changes of current and new roads and bridges, the official NTTFI as identified in attachment A. And whereas on the twenty eighth day of March twenty fifth, March twenty twenty five, the Economic and Business Development Committee of the Ogallaw, of the Tribal Council met and voted to approve updates and additions to the NTTFI as identified in attachment A, and forward it to the full Tribal Council for final approval. And whereas the Tribal Council has considered the matter, determined that it is in the best interest of the tribe to approve the attached updates and additions. Now, or be it resolved that the Tribal Council of Ogallawasoo Tribe does hereby approve the NTTFI updates and additions as identified in attachment A. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Rosales, second by Councilman Cross. Call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Donrósper? James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Poyer? Bo Little White Men?
Yes.
Garfield Still? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman? Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Lio Weston?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Nineteen yes, one not voting, motion carried.
That's all for E and BD. Thank you, chair.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to next agenda item, education committee. I don't see any agendas, nor item, uh, agenda item number sixteen, youth affairs. We'll move on to the president's office. Um, I believe they just passed out the president's report. I also have here the attorneys who have a um issue they wanna discuss under the president's office, under the president's report. We did have a, also I'd like to find out what, what is going on with the veterans building. Uh, we did draw up a resolution, it was passed in, uh, I guess, a committee. I just need a, a status update. Um, what are the specifics? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Um, so again, before, before um the suspension in EB and D, I requested for the Veterans Association to uh take ownership of the veterans building out to the casino. And they were given sixty days from that date to establish a sort of revenue for that, for that facility. Um, I didn't have the documentation for the building, I thought I did have it in my email, I know that uh Mr. Brewer or Mr. Whelan were supposed to provide those documents for that building, who built the building, where the funding um came from for that facility. There was one meeting that I did sit in for that faci, uh, for that building. There was ta, discussions on what the planning phase was for it. Um, I did present some ideas that I had prior to coming onto council in regards to what I foresee and how to bring funding for that facility. Uh, we know that South Dakota does have a high, um, high rate of tourism, and uh our culture, our um, our travel lands uh bring a lot of tourism, so I recommended you know, so, some of my ideas, so starting small and making it a C-store is an, an avenue that we can use for our veterans uh to bring revenue to that facility. Uh, so they had further discussion, they were supposed to meet with the casino GM. Uh, I don't know how many dates they have remaining, and I guess that would have to be with Councilman Cross. And I don't know if they continue to meet with you, Councilman, in regards to that facility yet, but I believe that they did get a key for that door, they're supposed to have moved into that building and start, um, start bringing in some type of revenue at that point. I, I know they were jokingly saying we're gonna set up a table and start selling coffee out of it, but they should be moving pretty uh expeditiously at this point.
Uh, who, who has the key?
The, they met with Shorty, I believe, what was it, two weeks ago? And they were supposed to change the lock on it, so they should have the key now, by now, I hope. I, unless
No.
Councilman Ghost Bear or Councilman Weston have any update to it.
No, uh, from my understanding, I've been attending the, the Veterans Committee, Powwow Committee um meetings, and there was no discussion of any ownership of any kind of keys or turnover, a key turned over to the veterans. Um, so it's, I think what we need, something documented, so um, we, we do have a resolution, I think I gave uh Councilman Weston that resolution.
So at that point, it would, I mean, I can only take the horse to the water. So they would have to, you know, make movement on thems, on themsel, with themselves. So I don't know what happened after that.
Councilman Ghost Bear?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, Law, you got the resolution? Is that the one that they were supposed to bring forward? Oh, but last week we had a meeting and um the discussion came up again that um they've been through this a few times, and they just wanna know if we can just get this done and over with now, so they could start doing something, cause they don't wanna step on a tri, tribe's toes and, 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 and cause any division on that end, but I do know that they're, they had a lot of conversations and they're ready to move forward. Um. That was along with the Veterans Committee, that, that we wanted to try to get people to see, so they could be in charge of it too, through that committee. I know we tried a few times on that, but um the election came and gone and went, but I don't know what happened there, the election commission was gone. But I think at this point, you know, I think we just need to go ahead and help the veterans, get them started on it, and give them the building, and get it turned over, cause ultimately, they said, it's, it is, it is ours. But you know, chair, I'll just, I'll make that motion.
So real quick, before I turn it over to Councilman Greenwell, here's a resolution and has the land dis- and has the land description and everything in it. Uh, it's being passed out right now, if you want to take a good look at it.
Also, Chair, you know, this could just start the veterans on some economic development too, and also, you know?
Yes.
Tribe will get taxes off it, whatever they decide to do with the building. Um, we, I just, I'm, I'm in support of this, and I've been advocate even last administration, trying to get it turned over, and, and I think we got a group of veterans that are serious and want to do something with it.
Yes. Councilman Greenwall.
Chair, I'll, I'm gonna second his motion. Eleven years ago, we're having the same discussion, man, I kid you not, that building is still sitting there empty. That belongs to our veterans now, and we need to get that done and over with, and let them get in there, their building there. Where, we bought it, we got a brand-new building that, just sitting there rotting, that actually needs to go to the veterans, and so I'll second his motion.
Can you restate your, um, motion there, uh, Councilman Goldspear, for the record?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to, uh, this resolution, like to... Well, well, there's a motion. So...
Okay.
Or what, are we trying to put another, uh, try to pump the brakes on this again, or what are we trying to do?
Well, we ha-
I mean, is that what we're trying to do, go another eleven years, or what, what's going on? What? Okay, well, he has a question in.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor in a second, so we'll take two, two of these questions. Well, go ahead, Councilman Cross.
Well, I was, before that motion, I was just gonna have the, um, we did, we did discuss it in EB and D Committee, um, on March twenty-fifth, but I think the motion was to have Julian go reach out to the veterans and then come back to committee. There was no, there was no stopping it or nothing, or trying to put the brakes on it for another eleven years, it was just to have this communication so that we can move forward with this, but we were supposed to come back to committee. And so, that's what, uh, that's what we discussed, so. That was to include the GM and, uh, EB and D Committee and the veterans, just to get, just to get this movin'. That's my comment, sir, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston.
You know, I wasn't, I was looking at the minutes, but I wasn't at that, uh, meeting on, when the EB and D met, on it, but I know that, uh, at the beginning, when this building was built, um, former Councilman, uh, Tom Conroy was the one that did the grant with Mr. Russ Zephier. They're the ones that wrote the grant, and they brought this building at that time, but for some reason, they built it out there. So that's where it's been sitting from the time they wrote the grant and got the money, funds to do it. And he always said that it was for the veterans, like a museum of something to, people could go into and see some things, maybe, um, uh, you know, different kind of plaques or different things like that on behalf of the veterans. So that was Tom's, uh, vision for that building, so I have to say that today, because he was, uh, you know, worked on that with Mr. Zephier, Russ, and they did, uh, bring that building. Since that time, you know, being on council this long, I know, and I told James, I said, didn't the tribe still own this building? And at one point in time, we asked the GM to build a convenience store, and, um, or he was gonna build one, he came to us at that time, and so we allowed for him to do that, but since that time, nothing has happened with it. So now, is it still the tribe's building, or does it actually belong to the veterans? Because in the beginning, the veterans wrote for that. Tom and Russ wrote for that grant and got it, and they put that building out there. That's how that building came about, by Mr. Conroy and Mr. Zephier. So they did get funds to, uh, do that building, and they had a vision for it to, um, you know, like I just mentioned. So now, they must have took action on that day where it was to come back to the EB and D Committee, so I guess that's where it is, you know, and I wasn't at the meeting that day, but that's still on the books. So I guess, I don't think we're, the committee wants to stop it, but I think we, if that was the action, are we just gonna maybe come back to a meeting and discuss that, or what? Because we've just not seen the resolution to approve it.
Well, from my understanding, now, and I'll turn it over to you next, um, um, my understanding is that we needed something in black and white, that's why this was drawn up at the last minute. Now they gave us sixty days, hell, it's already over thirty days. Um, so, that's why, that's where this came from. Uh, we don't have too much time left. Um, and we need something in black and white in order for Shorty to give us those keys, from my understanding. So, that's, this is where we're at right now. We can move forward, or we can wait another eleven years. With that, go ahead.
Thank you.
Let me, let me, uh, he had his hand first.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, just real quick about an update on this, Brian and Jeff did meet with the, um, Shorty out there concerning this building, and that was, uh, last month. So from there, it was supposed to come back here, and that's where this resolution came. So they're moving forward on it, you know? They're, the veterans group that is trying to move forward on it, that's where this came from. So they did meet with the Shorty out there, and that happened already, you know, so just a quick update.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you for that update, I wasn't aware that they were not given the keys, um, because I know when that happened, I called immediately to the veterans group and let them know, get out here, get this ball rolling, um, because just a little backstory to this, this was a facility that, you know, since my retirement, that when I was made aware of it, myself and Daryl Hernandez had been on a move to get this facility going, so we could start a revenue for our veterans. Our idea was to start that funding source going, so that we wouldn't have to come to the tribe and ask for fu, uh, money for the veterans, that we would establish some type of revenue for ourselves, so that we can become self-sufficient for the veterans, employ veterans, and sell for veterans, um, and so it was something to that effect that we wanted to start, we lost access to it, it went to the tribe, so then when I got on council, I fought for, uh, some taxation on it, so, but money would continue to come to the veterans. So now that I'm back on council, um, you know, I continue to fight for this facility so that we can at least establish something, because that building is splitting, the ground is moving, and you know how facilities work, if they continue to sit vacant, they start to, you, um, pull apart, or they, you know, they just go to waste. So if that, if they need document to give them a key in form of a resolution, it's unfortunate that it's been thirty days, um, and the suspension halted this, and I apologize for that. So if we need to give them an extension to continue to work on that, I'd support that as well.
Yeah. Um, just to...
Go ahead.
Just a quick comment, you know, um, as a chair for the committee, um, you know, out of respect for the committee, I'm not in how it ended up in your, under your agenda, Mr. Chair, but, but this issue was in our committee, and then out of respect, I think it should be, it should stand there until it comes out of it. And so I think, um, you know, moving forward, I think we just need to sit down with each other, and, and just have some good dialogue on this, and do, I mean, it's gonna move forward regardless, but I'm just speaking up for the, for Economic Business Development Committee, because it, the ball was in, the ball's in our court, and we just want to get, get this, get this moving, so that way they can start doing what they gotta do economically, so, I, I, I just want to speak for my committee, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, but, uh, you know, we had, we've been meeting on it, and I've, I'm, I'm a veteran, so I attend the veterans meetings, and I've attended the last three meetings weekly, and this is on a table, based on minutes, whatever was discussed, we had to make a desperate move, and this, this was it, uh, was going through the President's Office, so I said, okay, well, we'll give it a shot, I don't know how it's gonna turn out. But, and no disrespect to any committee, councilmen, uh, but it's, it's long overdue, and we need to do something, get it rolling. You have the paperwork in front of you, it's been on the table numerous times, but we keep going back to square one. Councilman.
You know, sounds to me we just need to give everyone a badge that worked on it. And if it goes to EB and D, all that's gonna do is just move it back here, let's just approve it and move forward.
Thank you.
Because I think that we had a long enough discussion, you talked about this for eleven years, it's been talked about for eleven years, my assumption that it was always a veterans' building, let's do it and just get it over with.
Thank you, with that, we're gonna call for the vote. Oh, wow, we need... Yeah.
Chair.
Go ahead, restate your...
I'm gonna read the, the resolution.
Yeah.
At the top of it. Resolution of tribal council of the Ogalawasu Tribe authorizing the permanent transfer of the facility, facility called the Ogalala Lakota Keachua Building to the tribal organization called the Ogalala Lakota Veterans of the United States Armed Forces. Motion.
Okay, motion by Councilman, we already have a second. Uh, Secretary, call for the vote. For the record, um, I think it'd be wise to read the whole, uh, resolution.
Whereas the Ogalawasu Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties of the Supreme Law of the Land with the United States Government, uh, U.S. Constitution Article, and is a signature in a treaty of Fort Lemmy, eighteen fifty-one, one stat, seven four nine, September seventeen, eighteen fifty-one, and the trees of the Fort Lemmy, eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stat, six three five, April twenty-nine, eighteen sixty-eight. Continues the nation, to nation relationship to federal government, and whereas the Ogalawasu Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote, December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five, in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act, under the Article Three of the Constitution, Ogalawasu Tribe, tribal council is a governing body of the Ogalawasu Tribe, and whereas, um, on August sixteenth, two thousand and seven, the EDI Special Project Number B zero five, SPSD zero two seven two grant agreement between the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, the Ogalawasu Tribe was made pursuant to the authority of the public law one oh eight dash four four seven, and the House Report one oh eight dash nine seven two. And whereas the amount of funds authorized on their special project totaled three hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred dollars for the construction of the veterans, veteran center to be used by the veterans upon the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation for meeting and gathering place, and whereas all vets from the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation will be honored by having their service to country and tribe, uh, mem, memorized. And whereas the resolution number, uh, zero seven dash eight two XB of the Ogalawasu Tribe Executive Committee authorized a five acre, five acre track, line described as track number T dash three two five zero dash, uh... West, southwest four, northwest four, northwest four, section fifteen, fifteen township, thirty-seven north range, forty-eight west, of the Ogalala County comprising of five acres or more or less now, for the Ogalawasu, Ogalala Lakota Keachua Veterans Building, and whereas in around two thousand and fifteen, the Ogalawasu Tribe authorized establishment of our organization called the Ogalala Lakota Veterans of the United States Armed Forces, which has veteran representation and alternates for each district on the Pine Ridge Reservation on their board. This committee is locally known as the Tribal Veterans Committee, and whereas on May seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, the tribal council adopted resolution number sixteen dash thirty-eight, thereby transferring the full control of the Veterans Museum Building to the, to the management of the Prairieland Casino, and removing the building from the tribe's schedule of assets. And whereas according to the VA, uh, pre, predictive analytic and service, their FY two thousand and twenty hundred report, the veterans population in Jackson was one hundred and sixty-nine, Bennett County one sixty, Ogalala Lakota, five hundred and sixty-nine counties combined with nine hundred and eight veterans, and whereas the entire veterans population with the exterior boundaries of the Ogalawasu Tribe are respectfully asking the Ogalawasu Tribe Council to return the Ogalala Lakota Keachua Building to the veterans. There be it resolved that the Ogalawasu Tribe Council hereby authorizes the permanent return of the Ogalala Lakota Keachua Veterans Building to the Ogalala Lakota Veterans of the United States Armed Forces. Be it further resolved that the Ogalala Lakota Keachua Veterans Building shall be under the, the management of the Ogalala Lakota Veterans of the United States Armed Forces, also known as the Tribal Veterans Committee. Certification.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. Secretary? No, no more questions, we, we need to run, we need to, if it doesn't pass, it passes, it don't. Secretary, call for the vote. Call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yeah.
Donroy Goldspear?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Poyer? David Poyer? Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Garfield Still? Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman? Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan JumpinEagle Senior?
Yes.
Lya Weston?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Unanimous twenty, motion carried, thank you. All right, look at that, that's history in the making, right there. Okay, we still got the President's Report, and I also need, um, um, decision with the, the attorneys in the executive session on the issue concerning the grass, grass property issue. Yes.
This was also approved to move forward eleven years ago.
So, let's do the President's Report. What'll be next, yes?
So you, you requesting approval of your reporter?
It's, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Councilman JumpinEagle, second by Councilman Rosales. Secretary, call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Donroy Goldspear? James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior? Gillian Spotted Bear? Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Poyer? Bo Little White Man? Garfield Still. Blaine Littlethunder.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Laya Weston.
Yes.
David Kelly. Greg Dillon. Beef Randall.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Seventeen, yes, three not voting, motion carried. You have a question, Councilman Still?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Chair, um, you know, during your, uh, you're, you're campaigning out in the communities, I know you talked about, um, um, doing, uh, uh, referendum constitutional reform. And one of the biggest issues we have is the, the lease issue with, um, the years. That's why we can't get businesses here. We can't get homes, everything because of the five-year issue. And so I, I wanted to know if, if at any point, are, are, do you have an initiative to get out or start the ball rolling on, on these, on constitutional amendments or reform or, you know, the things you talked about, because we all know this, we're, we're almost a quarter into this term. Before we know it, this is gonna be gone and then all the ideas and plans for, you know, this administration will just go out the window. But it, it does kinda take a lot of work to get the constitutional amendments and reform done. And not only that, another thing that the people been talking about for years was the land audit. And I shared this discussion with you. You know, there's concerns that we have and, and we can't get, we can't get anywhere out of land with this issue and so I'm hoping it would come out of your office, is that we really need to address the allocation process. You know, we have people that are on allocation committee that have leases. We have, uh, people on, on land committee that approve leases. Land committee that, that approves the, the, the rates for our leases. And somewhere along the line, I think that's a conflict of interest. So we need to start addressing, the most precious asset we have is our land. And so we need to start addressing our land. You know, there's a lot of things, a lot of things that I'm uncovering with our land that, that needs to be addressed, but you know, number one, I think, needs to, you know, what we need to do is look at a la- land audit to see how we lost a lot of our lands to some non-members or, or where that process went wrong and how do we protect that? But I, I guarantee you, we're not gonna get that out of land committee, so I'd, I'd rather see that come out of your office. And I, I, I wanna see us, um, protect our, our, you know, our, our interests as tribal members. Like I said, allocation committee members shouldn't be leases, but yet they are. And, and, um, same way on, on the committee, land committee. They shouldn't be setting those rates for themselves. But that's happening. So these are just some things that I'd like to see come out of your office where it's not a conflict of interest. And, and someone needs to take the bull by the horns on those issues. But, you know, one thing I wanted to make priority was the, the, the constitutional, um, reform or amendments. If, if you could.
I, I agree, you know, and I, I do believe constitution reform has to happen. Lot of us campaigned on it, on for it. And I would like to see some changes within our constitution and bring back some, some issues that are long overdue, so I definitely agree. We can have that discussion. And, um, looking forward to it. Go ahead, Councilman Greenwall.
Chair, I mean, that's so true, you know, a lot of our young couples that are out there, they, you know, they're starting new families and like many of our households, they're living in the bedroom in their mom and dad's house. Next bedroom has their brother and sister or whatever, their family in that bedroom. And trying to get a place here, just to get through this process of getting land, you know, I've been to the land office four or five times now. And I've been sent out to go look for land and I have to GPS my telephone, bring it back and then I come back, oh, that's taken. Somebody's holding that one. Somebody's this or that. Whenever, there should be a process of where they could come out with you and show you where it's all available. You click on it, oh yeah, that's available. And, and how many times I went up, driving my truck all over place, putting mileage, refilling my truck, I couldn't imagine our people having to keep on doing that, how they found the place that somebody didn't take up already. The other thing is the lenders. I got approved for half a million dollars to buy a house, but I can't put none nowhere here, because guess what the rule is now? You have to own that land. So in, in, in the books, it says that every family is allocated up to two acres of land. It doesn't say is leased up to two acres of land for homeowner, for home, it's like. So now I can't even own that. I only could do is lease it. So now there's another monkey wrench in there that now there's, the banks are saying, you have to own the two acres that you have now. So just like I'm back at ground zero again, starting all over, because I don't own the land. I could lease two acres or a lot in Pine Ridge, but I could never own it the way it's set up right now. And then we, we're sitting here with all the homeless, the lack of housing. This stuff really needs to be addressed. It needs to be a priority. It shouldn't take years and years and decades for that to, to happen, you know?
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. So, um, the next issue I have and it's, that's coming under the president's office, was I was asked by the attorneys that, uh, that we go into executive session on this. I do have three attorneys that would like to address the council. And I need to entertain a motion and it's on the grass property issue. And I do believe Jennifer Hughes is online. Okay.
Motion.
Okay, motion by Councilman Goldspear. Second by Councilman Dreamer. Secretary, call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yeah.
Donrigh Goldspear.
Yes.
James Cross. George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear. Richard Greenwall Senior. Anna Halverson. David Poyer. Bo Little White Men. Garfield Still. Blaine Littlethunder.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. Laya Weston.
Yes.
David Kelly. Greg Dillon. Beef Randall.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Mr. Kelly, would you like to vote?
Sixteen, yes, four not voting, motion carried. So at this time, we'll, at, uh, we'll go into executive session at four oh one. Jennifer Hughes, are you, are you there online?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, we'll do the lineup. I, I think Jennifer is going first.